Hello.
I can't wait to see what she can do.
Oh, no.
Yes, home to market.
It, uh, well, it fluctuates. It fluctuates, but I'm making a point to talk to them and check it every Tuesday and kind of help them take it up and take it down so that it's...
It's a teensy bit, yep.
I get it.
I'm sorry.
Seventy-five percent of what they're doing.
Now, the mayor's always late. He knows it. See, he's, look, he's still...
There's no reason... So I'll ask again.
Just in the nick of time.
Hello, Mayor.
Justin cuts him so close. I think it's a game. Oh, see, look, it's my thirty. I'm ready to go. Hit that gavel, Mayor.
The October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting in the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois is called order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMeniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Henauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. We'll start off with our zoning portion of the meeting. First item on the agenda is docket number twenty twenty-one dash zero four seven for the property located at forty-eight fifty International Parkway. Petitioner is TTM Properties LLC, series Rising Moon Road as purchaser, and Solinger Development LLC by William J. Solinger, manager as owner. Present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial District, section one five five point zero four zero. Requested zoning relief, a variance of section one five five point one one two surfacing to allow the construction of an open off-street parking and vehicle storage of dustless asphalt millings and rock without requiring a wearing surface of asphaltic concrete or comparable hard surface and section one five five point one three six regulations for resurfacing or for surfacing of off-street loading facilities to allow the construction of open off-street loading spaces of dustless asphalt millings and rock without requiring a durable hard surface pavement. Springfield-Sagman County Regional Planning Staff Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sagman County Regional Planning Staff with the amendment to limit the relief for this property to the proposed use listed in the petition. Chair will entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the plan as submitted.
Second. Been moved second to approve the plan as submitted to the Springfield-Sagman County Regional Planning Staff. Any discussion? All those, you want to say anything or we'll just take the vote?
We'll ask, yes, go ahead and vote.
Smart.
Good idea.
Good move.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Docket number passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number twenty twenty-one dash zero four nine for the property located at twenty-eight sixty-one Stanton Street. Petitioner is Tail Command LLC. Present zoning classification is PUD, Planned Unit Development, Lake Victoria PUD Office World. Requested zoning relief reclassification to B-1 Highway Business Service District, section one five five point zero three three. If it is determined that reclassification is not appropriate, petitioner requests a use variance for a dog daycare, training, boarding, and grooming facility at the property. Springfield-Sagman County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is reclassified to R-five C with a use variance for a dog care, dog daycare, training, boarding, and grooming facility. Chair will entertain a motion.
Woo, that was a lot there, Mayor. That's not tricky.
I thought you were doing an imitation.
What I would like to do is approve and let these, I've had some great conversations. It's a, um, a dog training place. They had the same facility in another, um, location in my ward, so I'm really, really excited that they found a location to stay in Ward Two. So I would like to approve this, uh, the planning and zoning recommendation.
Second. Been moved second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation to reclassify to R-five C. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The docket number passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number twenty twenty-one dash zero five zero for the property located at eleven zero eight South Second Street. Petitioner is Springfield Rentals LLC. Present zoning classification is R-five B, general residence and office district, section one five five point zero two one. Requested zoning relief, a variance of section one five five point zero five six, minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow for a total of four dwelling units on a lot containing six thousand three hundred twenty square feet of lot area instead of the ten thousand square feet required per code, and a variance of section one five five point four eighty I-one dash five landscape screening and lighting regulations, transitional buffer yard requirement, and landscaping to reduce the required transitional buffer yard north and south property lines from ten feet to zero feet for the construction of the drive lanes and parking areas in the rear. The petitioner will install a six-foot fence, privacy fence, along the south property line. Springfield-Sagman County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sagman County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Uh, yes, accept the petition of the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission, and also just a special congratulations to Seth on his third baby girl.
Okay.
Just got home from the hospital. I'm sure he's going on no sleep, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. I'll second that motion.
Second. Been moved second to accept the Springfield-Sagman County Regional Planning Staff recommendation for approval, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. And the docket number passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is docket number twenty twenty-one dash zero five one for the property located at nineteen thirty-six South Lincoln Avenue, parcel one, nineteen forty South Lincoln Avenue, parcel two, twelve nineteen West Ash Street, parcel three. Petitioner is Sally Whitlock. Present zoning classification is R-one, single-family residence district, section one five five point zero one five, with twelve nineteen West Ash Street, parcel three, having relief via dockets nineteen ninety-one dash zero five five, change to non-conforming use of a beauty parlor and clothing store. Two zero zero two dash zero nine four, change of non-conforming use for a beauty parlor and massage therapy, condition that massage therapy be limited to a eighty-square-foot area of the property. Twenty sixteen dash zero three one, change of non-conforming use for a specialty retail store selling indoor garden equipment and supplies, and twenty eighteen dash zero six six, change of non-conforming use for a consignment store shop with retail sales. Requested zoning relief is parcel one, a variance of one five five point zero five five, minimum lot width for residences to allow a lot with fifty point zero one feet instead of sixty feet per code, a variance of one five five point zero five six, minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow a single-family residence on a lot containing six thousand eight hundred twenty-four square feet of lot area instead of the seven thousand two hundred square feet required per code, a variance of one five five point zero six one, basic yard requirements to allow a rear yard setback of seven point seven two feet instead of the twenty feet required per code. Parcel two is a variance of one five five point zero five five, minimum lot width of residences to allow a residence on a lot width of fifty-six point three nine feet instead of sixty feet required per code, a variance of one five five point zero six eight, B-one, garages or accessory buildings or structures to allow a north property line setback for a garage of one point zero seven feet instead of three feet required per code. And parcel three, reclassification from R-one, single-family residence district, section one five five point zero one five, to S-one neighborhood, commercial, and office district, section one five five point zero three zero, and a variance of one five five point zero six one, basic yard requirements to allow an existing front yard to have setback of four point four two feet instead of fifteen feet required, a variance of section one five five point zero six four, required front yards and partially residential blocks, and to allow the existing four point four two front yard setback instead of twenty feet required, a variance one five five point zero six three, required yards for lots adjoining residential districts to allow a side yard setback of five feet on the west property line and one point six seven feet on the east property line instead of twenty feet required, and a variance of one five five point four eighty I-one dash five, landscaping and lighting regulations, transitional buffer yard requirement, and landscaping reducing the required transitional buffer yard for the northeast and west property lines from ten feet to zero feet to allow the building, parking spaces, and access to the alley for the parking area. Springfield-Sagman County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sagman County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, that was a long one you read.
It was. I hope it's going forward.
As to parcels one and two, recommend approve the petition as submitted with the staff recommendations to apply the bulk regulations to the existing structures and concur with the traffic engineer's requirements concerning the easement. With respect to parcel number three, approve the petition as submitted and grant a use variance for the photography studio instead of reclassification to S-one zoning. The contract buyer is not here tonight. She is not feeling well, but she's in agreement with the staff recommendation and with the motion that's made. Her name is Lauren Tompkins, and we appreciate her investing in at the corner of Ash Street and Lincoln.
Second. Been moved second to accept the staff recommendation and approve for parcels one and two, and then on parcel three, submit as a use variance for the photographer portion of the retail staff arrangement instead of the S-one zoning.
That's correct.
Is that correct? And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. This time, the chair recognizes Treasurer Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of September had a beginning balance of forty-five million four hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars. We took in total receipts of eighteen million sixty thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of September of twenty-one million two hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of September of forty-two million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Of that balance, Mayor Langfelder, in the month of September, the ARPA funds, American Rescue Pla, American Rescue Plan Act, sorry, funding balance was fifteen million two hundred two thousand seven dollars at the end of September. That concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We do have two presentations. First is kind of a piggybacking on what Public Works had done with their city works program. It allows for other integration with regards to our webpage and portals, with regards to community engagement, and Ravi Doshi from Oped and Mesvin Lent, they're here to give a brief presentation on how this can help our residents. So if you want to come forward, Ravi.
Thank you, Mayor, and all the persons. We have revamped our office planning and economic development website. One of those is the incentive areas lookup, which we'll demonstrate here. But first, just really wanted to thank Riley Potts and Public Works for their work on this project as well. So Mesvin, if you wouldn't mind just starting from the very beginning, of the ease of use of this, what we wish to do is have this available where an individual, resident, or business owner can simply type in their address and would be able to view the programs that our office offers, as well as direct contact information and application processes for those available programs. This is in the phase one of this rollout. This is currently compatible with all desktops, laptops, as well as tablets. However, we are working on compatibility with mobile devices to have it easily accessible on cell phones. So Mesvin, if you just want to type in the Springfield dot IL dot US website, we can start from the very beginning, and we have it available on these screens for the alder persons as well as the public. And from this screen, you would simply click on the city departments, and you would bring up the planning and economic development webpage. And from here, we've created a one-stop-shop link at the very top, which is the incentive areas lookup. So you would just click on that, and here, you would simply just type in the address that you would like to learn more about, and we're just going to pick one. And to the left, you will see all the listed programs that are available, what ward that person is, who the alder person is of that ward, as well as the programs that would be available, what TIF district they're in, who the direct point of contact is for those programs. So we can start at the left. If you would just click on Ravi Doshi, my name, as far as the, one of the programs. Once you click on that, it would directly allow you to email me for direct contact. If you click on the business improvements, it would directly bring up the application fields for you to fill out for application for TIF funding, if that's a program that you select, or on the rehabilitation side, similarly, it would work. So this is just an example of how all the other programs function in terms of ease of access as well as contact information. So we just wanted to present this. To the right, you can certainly see exactly the map and where that parcel is located, where that address is, what overlaps as well. If you want to zoom out just a little bit, Mesvin, there we go. We can see what district it's in, what underlying, you know, whether they're in the TIF district, whether they're in a cannabis business district, what ward they're in, all of that is available, as well as we have at the bottom right, a button where you can click on to incorporate a satellite view, so you can kind of get a feeling for the terrain, as well as surrounding ecosystem, as well as what that parcel looks like in real time. So we just wanted to present this to the public. This is live right now, so residents are able, who do have a desktop laptop, as well as tablet, can easily understand exactly what services they would be available for. We just wanted to demonstrate that.
Any questions? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Next is Chief Winslow with the Police Department update. Make a follow-up to last week's discussion.
I like it. Good job.
I think there's a handout. I think everybody has, right? Thank you.
I think Darlene's been it up. Good evening. Tonight, we're going to present to you our quarter three review, which will be quarters one through three. The first slide you have in front of you is just a breakdown of our city and our beat structure. Our beat size is determined by the type and volume of calls for service. Our calls for service from quarter one to quarter three compared to last year, as you can see there, we're down about seven percent. Report written is about equal, flat, crash reports are flat, and our ordinance violations are down. Calls for service by day of the week, obviously, if you look right here, you'll see that Friday is the highest day, but it's still pretty flat across the board, pretty even when you look at the table. Calls for service by month breakdown, again, pretty equal. The big thing this year compared to years past is the huge increases in January, February, and March that we experienced this year when we had all the shootings going on. As you'll see, January has been our busiest month year-to-date, and that's typically just the opposite. Calls for service for, by beat, as you can see, again, pretty well equally distributed. Our Part One index crimes. Now, these crime stats are only January through June. As I stated last week, we are still working on the transition to neighbors that the feds and the state requires to do. Our people have been working diligently, our records manager and IT people working through issues with the state portal, as well as our own vendor, to get these stats. As you can see, for the first seven, our first six months, we were down seven percent overall and five percent in crimes against persons. The rest of the stats I show you will be for the quarter three. Those are tracked in our crime analysis unit. So when we look at homicides, through the first three quarters, we had seven homicides, all by gunshot. Confirmed shots fired. You can see the comparison from last year to this year. We're actually down a little bit on the confirmed shots fired. What is a confirmed shot fired? That's any shots fired call or shot spot alert where we respond, we find evidence of a crime, whether that's broken windshield glass, whether that's a casing, whether that's a witness who said they saw people shooting or heard people shooting. We count that, unlike some departments who don't count that kind of information. Additionally, on this page, you'll see the victim's shot status. Now, you will see that year-to-date, we've had fifty-seven people shot compared to thirty-seven last year. But if you go back down, you look at the table, look at the increases in the first three months when we put our task force together. When you look at that, you saw we had twenty-three people shot in the first three months of the year compared to seven. We put our task force together in March, you see the reduction, now we're about flat for the rest of the year. Confirmed shots fired by reasoning. As you can see, there's drugs, honor, domestic issues, robberies or armed robberies, unknown, rolling disturbances, disputes, and then gang-related. The gang-related is ones that we can say that gang members were involved in. We know some of our rolling ones also were gang-related, but we can't come out and say a hundred percent yet because those investigations are still going on. Firearms recovered this year. As you'll see there, we've recovered three hundred and four firearms so far this year compared to two hundred and sixty-nine in the entire year last year, which is a thirty-six percent increase already this year. Gun-related arrests, again, you see the large increase there, thirty-six percent increase. Traffic summary for the year, so far, you can look in here, you'll see that we've done thirty-nine traffic details. We've taken three thousand one hundred and seventy-six motor vehicle accidents, five thousand six hundred and sixty-eight citations have been issued, one hundred and thirty-eight DUI arrests, four hundred and fifty-eight suspended revoked drivers, two hundred and ten no valid drivers, twelve hundred and twenty-one vehicles towed, thirteen hundred and fifty-four parking citations have been issued, and four hundred and thirty-seven abandoned vehicle notices. This is a breakdown of the motor vehicle accidents, showing by type, property damage accident with injury, and unknown injuries. The next one is our high accident intersections. No shock to us, they may move a little bit in the ranking every year, but it's typically the same ones as always. Sagman Avenue and North Dirksen since it's been annexed into the city, it's been the number one in the area. I think we all are aware that Public Works is working on that with IDOT, as well as MacArthur and Lawrence. Other activities by the officers, directed patrols in our hotspots, eight thousand three hundred and twenty-three directed patrols, five thousand thirty, five thousand three hundred and eighty-eight premise checks, sixty-six vacation checks, and then fifty-five alderperson concerns or issues that we've addressed. Just to go on that, too, go back to the traffic thing. In addition to the formal details we do on traffic, officers still do traffic in their normal calls for service, their normal daytime hours. It's just not a formal detail where we have the traffic units out there. As you're well aware, with our manpower issues, our traffic units, a lot of times are redeployed to answer calls for service right now due to our manpower shortages. Major projects that are ongoing, I talked about neighbors earlier, that has been something we are still working with. I believe we are now a handful of departments who have been certified by the state, but we're still working through technical issues with them. Accreditation is still ongoing. We anticipate getting accredited in the first quarter of next year. Shot Spot Connect has come online for our predictive analytics. It's up and running very well since the first of August, and then obviously, they're recruiting and hiring. We're constantly recruiting and hiring right now. We're in the process of offering four tests in a two-week period, trying to get people in the doors. Potential fourth-quarter concerns or issues, burglary to motor vehicles, it's that time of season, people start leaving holiday gifts in their cars, we start seeing burglary to motor vehicles go up. We're asking everybody, please lock your car doors and don't leave your valuables in plain sight. Same thing going along with that, motor vehicle thefts. People leave their cars running up as we go into the fall/winter months, it's colder, they like the defrost run, the heat run, and we see the motor vehicle thefts. Holiday season coming on, the porch bandits, your online deliveries that you have delivered to your house when you're not home, we see people over and over going up stealing those things. We're asking you to have it delivered to a friend, a family member, or make arrangements to pick it up the post office, or FedEx, or wherever else. Robberies and thefts, we're getting ready to run our armed robbery suppression details. This is the armed robbery suppression era, when people start wearing masks and start moving on in the Halloween, they're carrying weapons under heavy clothing, so we'll see that, I anticipate picking up like it typically does. Additionally, retail thefts go up this time of year, and then the e-commerce, you know, I know we just ran out of the crime a week for two incidents we had over here recently. We are asking you that if you are going to participate and buy stuff online from another person, you please go to a well-lit area that you feel safe in. The police department has our e-commerce zone, we would anticipate and advise everybody, please to go there. That's the most safe place you can go, it's under camber, it's in our lobby, you can get in any time.
Chief, you can't do gun, you can't...
You cannot do guns and weapon trades in here. That is correct. I'm sorry, should have probably stated that. Manpower concerns, obviously, we just hired fourteen people, nine who graduated from the academy last week, we have six scheduled to graduate here in a couple, about a month from now. With that said, we tried to hire twenty-four and only got fourteen who made it through all the process. With that said, we have sixteen positions we're trying to hire for in January, an additional fifteen in the April class. That will get us back to above our authorized strength anticipating certain retirements. However, again, we're going to be a year out, ten to eleven months minimum, to get somebody trained and up and going. So that's still going to be this issue with the manpower for another year that we're working through, you know. I don't think anybody knew last year when we were asked to submit to a hiring freeze last fall, we all knew it was going to be, what it was going to take to get through it. Obviously, if we didn't know there was going to be ARC funds out there, we wouldn't agree to that, we'd have made different decisions. But our men and women are out there, they're working hard, day in and day out, and overall crimes down, and I anticipate crime being down for the year. But our calls for service are down, too. People are still working in, from home on COVID, we're seeing a reduction there, I think that's why some of our property crimes are down. But again, the men and women out there are doing a great job right now. I'm at this time open for any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Solomon McMeniman.
Thank you, Chief. That was a good report. Everyone recognizes we're short on manpower and woman power, and we're trying to resolve that, and it'll take some time. Just one comment and one request. The comment is on the confirmed shots fired with a victim. I see there's a pretty good jump there, and that's what you hear out there in the community. People are worried about getting shot, and they're aware of people getting shot, so that it's jumped from thirty-seven victims through September for last year to fifty-seven victims for twenty-twenty-one through September. So that's a major concern. The other request is, you've got a good traffic summary here, and that kind of relates to another major, major area of concern, is the traffic, the traffic safety and the traffic violations out there. And could you give us at a future meeting in the next, within the next month, a comparison of motor vehicle accidents for this year compared to, let's say, last year? There's, it's a big number, motor vehicle accidents, three thousand one hundred and seventy-six, that's a big number. And I take it this is for a three-month period, a three-quarter period, excuse me, nine months. There's a lot of accidents taking place out there, and that ties up our patrolmen with those kind of situations. So if you could give us some comparison on the traffic accidents, I realize if we, if you, and also give us the citations issued, I realize that the citations may be way down because we're short of patrol officers, but I think that'd be useful to have also, so thanks a lot, Chief.
Yep, no problem. I will say that I did look at that motor vehicle accident, and we will get that study for you, but we're not, I didn't see any gaping holes or like a huge increase or a decrease from last year, but we'll get that and present that to you here in the next couple weeks.
Thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks for the presentation this evening. I'm, you know, I've been contacted, and I'm very concerned. I'm glad to hear you bring up the comments about... up the comments about the staffing levels, the level is extremely low, we needless to say need to hire, I'm glad to hear you say that. But if you could, I hear these rumors and I don't like rumors without verifying that they're true or not, I always like to go to the source and these are just things I've heard in the last couple of weeks, so I'm glad you're here to give us the opportunity to ask this question. But I hear about officers that have come on board, they're going, they go through the training and they're in years, you know, like one through, you know, five, let's say, and they're leaving the department and going elsewhere, whether it's to the state or another municipality, is that a trend that is indeed happening or is that not true?
I'd have to get the numbers for this year, we have had some who have left in the, within that five-year window, and typically we do, typically we lose people to the feds or to the states, we always have some of those. But we're seeing some people just leave the field completely due to, what they quoted to us in accident interviews and stuff, you know, the current environment that we're in, the stress of the job, sometimes they leave for better pay at other locations. I've said over and off, our starting pay is not competitive with our comparable cities, we're not competitive with any major department in the state when it comes to starting pay, that's something we're going to try to address during negotiations. But we are, have seen people who are leaving also just for slower, how do I say this right? A slower pace, a smaller department that pays well and we are losing a few of those, but it hasn't been a ton, but there's been a fair amount over the last year that had left of that. That's something we didn't used to see, you know, I've talked to chiefs in other departments that are seeing the same things, I know that in some other departments are seeing people leave for more affluent communities where the, the activity is not as heavy. And so we do, we have seen some of that, this is a very stressing time for our officers, it's a very difficult job out there, they've worked through the virus, you know, through the virus and they give 110%, they're working 12-hour days, they're working long days. So again, you know, I think once we get our manpower back to where it needs to be, we'll see somebody, but I still think you're going to see some people who are going to leave. We've always had people leave for the state, we've always had people leave for the feds, you know, we try to convince people obviously to stay, but I can tell you that we've lost three to Indiana in the last year because I think Indiana is a more police-friendly state.
I see, well, Chief, I appreciate that insight and, and the mayor and I have talked about, you know, different ideas and haven't come up with anything in concrete, but like more incentive-type ideas, I've mentioned, you know, we have obviously funds available, maybe there's a way to not only attract, unique outside-the-box ways to attract young folks to the police department and keep them. And that's something I'd like to talk to you about, I know the mayor has some ideas as well and, you know, there's other areas that are non-police related regarding some incentives and ways to attract folks, but that we'll be bringing forward. But getting to the staffing, you've mentioned, and you've mentioned that there's two up, potential up-and-coming classes, like one, I think it was like 14 and 13, 13, 14, something like that in each class, is there a way since we are down to try to have a bigger class? And here's what, here's what we're also hearing, we're also hearing, and I think you've said it in this room, that, so I question, before I get to the question first of all, is there a way to combine and try to hire more in earlier than later instead of spreading out? That's the, that's the first question, but the comment is, is I'm also hearing that we used to have hundreds of people applying to be police officers, let's say, you know, like 400 people at a time would apply and now the number is 100, which leads to obviously fewer and fewer people in the end that make, make the cut.
So to answer the first part of the question, we're looking to hire 16 in January, backgrounds are going in front of the civil service here next Wednesday for a special hearing to get those people certified. We're working with HR to change the process a little bit and make the job offer earlier because the competition is so stiff out there, to let them know that pending your passing of the psychological and the medical, you will be hired on this date in January because prime example, I know three people who currently tested with us have job offers on the table from Peoria and Dallas, Texas. So the competition is petthroat, it's tight, it's stiff, so we're going to try to make that job offer as quick as possible so that candidate knows, hey, as long as I pass the psychological and this medical, I'm in, I got a job. So we're going to try to change that. The other thing we did is we tried to do four testing process, we did one back in July, we're doing four over this three-week period, we're working, our two-week period we're doing right now. We had one on Saturday, six people has all just showed up.
Wow.
We had one just the other day, one person showed up. The competition and the recruitment, I've said it over and over, recruitment and retention of police officers, we are going to see a crisis level in law enforcement and it's not just here, it's across the board, every chief I talk about, talk to, every chief's meeting you go to throughout the state, doesn't matter if it's in Illinois, Missouri, Indiana, the conversation turns back to, there's a exodus of law enforcement from the chief down across the country right now. And showing our officers the support, a little bit of love to be honest with you, is needed. They're out there, they are doing a great job day in and day out and I know you guys support them 110% and they appreciate that support. But it is tough out there right now and then, you know, we got to get more competitive on the pay scale. I know we've held down to 1.75, 1.5 and across the boards through the recessions, but we got to look at something to make us more competitive in the long run going forward. We've had some brief conversations about some things to incentivize, as you talked about, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about that, even had some brief conversations with some of our unions on what they could and could not support maybe. So again, it's just, I don't know the easy answer, we, it's a great career, it's a great job, we're not a destination city, you know, we're not, we're not Fort Lauderdale, Florida, we don't have beaches, we don't have mounds, but we have a great community with great people. So convincing people and selling what our community has, but a lot of the people we're even trying to recruit are saying, you know what, the time's just not right for me, the time's not right for me. I was talking to a young man at UYS that I've been recruiting, he's a CRJ major, told him, come test in November, you graduate in May, you'll have a job waiting for you in May, if you come through and do well and pass it. And he's like, the time just ain't right for me right now, Chief, I want to let some of this blow over a little bit. I think the numbers will come back around as that pendulum swings back a little bit, but you've got a lot of people who are scared, a lot of people who normally wanted to be a police officer, going into the correction side, they're going into different portions of the criminal justice system because of the current environment they were in, they don't want, they want to see what happens at the State House, they want to see what happens with qualified immunity. I know that we're working as chiefs on a trailer bill right now to try to maintain qualified immunity for our officers. So it's not a easy time and many of the senior officers that we talk to, not just in my department, but other departments, they're counting days, they're counting days. It's a great career, it's a wonderful profession, it's very rewarding emotionally, you know, when you make that positive change in somebody's life and have that positive effect, there's not a, you can't put a price tag on it. But we got to get our young men and women in our community to, to see that. And again, the competition is tough, you know, when I came on, we tested every three years, my finalist had 890-something odd people on it, it was a 1,500 people that applied, we did two days over at the convention center. Even three, four years ago, we were getting 300 applicants and we were having 150, 160, 170 show up, you whittle it down, you end up with a finalist of 100. The test we did in, that before we tested in July, the pass list, we had like 90-something on it, finalist was like 90-something after passed everything, it was like 160 we started with, down to 90-something. But when we went to hire, a very large portion, HR could probably give you that number, just said, I'm not interested right now, and they backed out, that's how we ended up with 14 when we were trying to hire 24, so out of almost 90 people on that list, we got 14. So again, that's just the stage and we live in law enforcement, as the profession evolves, as society evolves, we all have to change, we have to continue to show people the value that law enforcement provides and the good work that we do out there. And there's a lot of guys and girls that are internalizing what they read on social media, what they see on TV and they internalize that and some people are deciding just to say, I'm out. So again, we'll see how many show up in these next two tests we got coming up. I'm confident off the list that we did in July, myself and AC Scarlet did chief ranking interviews a few weeks ago with some other members of our community and HR, it was a good group of people, we interviewed like 40 people, 38 I think, and a good group of people. I have no doubt we'll get our 16 we need for January off that list and maybe even have a few left over for the April class, I'm confident in these four tests we're given now that we'll get the remainder that we need. But recruiting and retention is a 365-day-a-year effort, it cannot be like we used to where you wait till a couple of months before you apply, you do, it has to be that 365-day-a-year effort, it has to be just like when you're recruiting somebody to go play college at your school, it has to be multiple contacts on the same recruit and show them the value of your department, sell your department. And we have to be competitive when it comes to pay and benefits and we are competitive with benefits and we're competitive with pay at the five-year mark, four-year mark, just at the beginning, we're way down.
Thanks for that explanation.
Yep, Alderman Williams, Alderwoman Conley, Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Gregory. Go ahead, Alderman Williams.
Wow.
Want to keep track.
Can you elaborate on the 30 inactive, is that, is that a temporary number or does it fluctuate or?
It fluctuates, so what you see there, we have one gentleman who's on a leave of absence, I told you we had three go to Indiana, one of those gentlemen's leave of absence is still valid. You know, obviously if he came back tomorrow and said he wanted to come back, we'd be taken back, he was an officer in good standing and my thought process on granting him a leave of absence even though we are short on manpower is that we invested money into this gentleman, he was like a four-year officer, five-year officer, he left to go to a very affluent community in Indiana, his wife and him wanted to relocate there, but obviously we value him as a member of our department, if he came back tomorrow and said, I want to be reinstated, we reinstated him, he hit the ground running. Now, that leave of absence is for 90 days, so it's getting close to running this, this thing there. The extended military leave, the only ones we put there on military leave, we're not talking about the two-week deployments, a week here, two weeks here, those people are gone for one to four years, or one to three years I should say. So those are just people that are gone and then we have to carry them on our payroll, we can't fill their spots, they're just people that are gone for long-term deployments. Family medical leave, those are three people, that number does fluctuate, but those again right now are people who are going to be gone in excess of 60 days. The injured status is unknown how long they're going to be gone, but it looks like that's going to be a several month, he blew out his knee. Light duty status are those who are injured but can still work in some capacity at the department, just not on patrol as a police officer. And then 14 in training, that's the nine that we just graduated from the academy last week, the six that we still have, or the five we still have in there, and those will be in training for probably another, the ones who just graduate, they'll be in training for another 20, 22 weeks. The ones that are in the academy, I believe they got about a month to go before they graduate and then they'll come out, do two to three weeks at our academy and then go through about 20 to 22-week field training program. So that's how you get at that inactive number and when you add that up, that's about 22% of our manpower, that's a large portion of our manpower. Not hiring those 16 people last year in September, you know, knowing the fiscal condition that the state was or the city was in, the police department stepped forward along with the PBPA, worked together to avoid layoffs, to avoid furloughs by making the shared sacrifices and these men and women have been doing it and it's a two-year process. So again, you know, they deserve whatever they get and they do a great job.
And how's that inactive number compared to other years, is that average or below or above?
I don't have that, we can try to look and try to crunch that, it's not something we normally track, but we could probably try to look at it and see if we can come up some numbers. FMLA goes up and down, FMLA can be anything from somebody who's battling an illness, could be somebody who's off on pregnancy leave, maternity leave, it could be anything, so it could be somebody who's fighting some kind of intermittent, taking care of a parent or a sick loved one or a family member, so it can be a little bit of everything, but that does fluctuate, there's been times that number's been as high as 14, 15. So again, it just fluctuates, three's not bad for us in that aspect right now.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief. So one of the things you talked about in your manpower issues is the long hours that your officers work and I know fairly recently we went from the eight-hour shifts to the 12-hour shifts, what kind of feedback are you getting on that, I mean, those, those are long hours.
We went from nine hours to 12, we used to work a 5-3, nine-hour shift, it worked for us, we're the only department that I know other than the county that's been on that across the country, we've shared that schedule with many, many departments. The 12-hour days, it's a mixed bag, it's a mixed bag, you know, it's something we had to do, it was either that or five and two eight-hour days, which nobody wanted, nobody wanted set days off, nobody wanted five and twos where you're getting a Tuesday, Wednesday off or a Wednesday, Thursday. It's a mixed bag, I tell you, if they're on day shift, you don't hear a whole lot of rumblings about it, they're now adapted to it, most of them don't mind it, some would still prefer to go back to a 5-3, but you don't hear them. But that midnight shift, that 7P or 6:30P to 6:38, that's a long night, that's a long night on a Friday and Saturday night when you're hopping, calling, call till 4:30, 5:00 in the morning.
So do you have officers who are working Friday, Saturday night, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, three of those in a row?
So it's every other weekend schedule, so they, every other weekend they get some portion of the weekend and then every other weekend they get the weekend off. So they do work that, if you're on that night shift and they do work the weekends during the day shift too, we also have a 4P to 4A, we try to put our manpower where the calls for service are needed by looking at our call for service breakdown by hours of the day. You know, we've had some conversations, some people really like it, some of the younger officers seem to like it more because it's every other weekend off, but that midnight shift, that's a tough one, I'll be honest, it's not one I would want to work a 12-hour day on. You know, in a perfect world, once we get back to full staffing, I've had some preliminary conversations with AC Scarlet as well as some of the union board members, I would like to offer an option because there are people who like the 12-hour days, if we could ever get our manning back to a true 250 and be there, you know, maybe you look at running a 7A to 7P day shift, 12-hour days, and then maybe you do a 4 to 4 because that's where our calls for, and then maybe you bring in a traditional midnight shift, works a 5-3 like we used to work and that way no one's working that 12-hour overnight deal. And then you give them an option, you like the 12-hour days, then you can bid every year, every November on whichever shift you want to do based on your seniority. I think that would also help us in recruiting people, to be honest with you, I think that could be sold as a way to recruit people because some people do want every other weekend off.
Okay, yeah, and I appreciate that, I certainly would like to see, you know, as you're doing more recruiting and we get our numbers back up, if that's something that flexibility and scheduling is, is important, I'm sure. Certainly, again, I would like to say, I've heard from a couple constituents this week who've had the police come and deal with situations and without fail, everyone has thanked me for the officer's professionalism, for their courtesy, for their attention to detail on issues, so, you know, these are a lot of, there's a lot of numbers here, but behind these numbers are some very good officers who are doing a lot of work that's greatly appreciated, so I, please do share our appreciation and thanks.
The one thing we have going in our favor, as I sat here and I told you guys about three years ago, that we were going to go through a transition period where we were a very old department to a younger department, all the people came under Clinton crime bill, including myself, we're all getting to retirement age and, you know, a lot of those people are gone already. I think within another eight, nine months, we're going to start getting back to our normal cycle of eight to 10, 12 retirees a year would be a lot, we won't see these 20 people leaving and this kind of thing we've seen over the last few years. So I think there is some light at the end of the tunnel here, getting people hired as quickly as possible and onboard. To answer, Alderman, I don't think I really answered your question about can we get more people through the academy at the same time, 15 is about as most as the academy will give you because there's a need for officers all around the state, we're a primary department in Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center, so they give us those 15 spots in exchange to us providing an advisor over there. So when we do hire, I got to send another officer over off the streets to be an advisor while they're there too, but it gives us a lot of insight into our officers and the candidates that are coming on, but that's one of the agreements that if we're going to put that many people in there, we have to provide that to them. And the commander and the director over there are great people, the truth is, 15 is about all we can get, be honest with you, if they came to us in January and said, hey, we had some people back out, their commitments and there's two or three more openings, if we got the candidates there, we're going to move forward and try to push them through. The mayor's gave us full blessing to hire as many as we can, we just couldn't get the candidates in the door.
Thank you.
Well, that's good to know, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer, then Gregory, then Alderwoman DeSanto.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, on the high accident intersections, it appears there's a lot of them on Veterans Parkway and on Wall Bash and Nate, I don't know if, if you can have the, get with the state and look and see what's, what's going on, are they people running red lights or that, you know, we, I'd like, like to kind of know, but we, we need to look at, I know that a lot of them seem to be on state routes, you know, all of them, but if you could look at those, I think that we need to get state involved to look at some of these. Thank you.
You know what, since we're going to be preparing something for Alderman, I'll see if I can break that down because we can pull the reports, maybe go through manually, look at the codes.
Yeah, I don't want you to spend a lot of time on it, you know, but I don't want to spend a lot of, spend your time doing reports for us, I'd rather, you know, fight and crime and that, but I do think that, I do think that we need to kind of get the state involved in these, if they're state routes, they all seem to be state routes and, you know, I've, I've said it before that we have a bad problem in this town with people running red lights and, and, you know, we, we may have to go to legislature and see if we can, if we can do something with red light cameras or something, just to actually have with red light cameras or something, just to actually have the ability to threaten people with it, you know. And if we have it, if we can move them around or whatever, I don't know what, anything about them. But, you know, if they're out there, people will know. And we could, we might be able to solve a lot of budget problems in this town with red light cameras. And I'm not kidding about that, because it's bad. And so I told my 16-year-old son, when the light turns green, don't go until you make sure the guys that turn red are stopping.
Alderman, Gregory?
I would have to agree with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with you, Mr. Hanauer. I just had a conversation with my daughter about that green light and staying and pausing for a little bit. So I totally agree with that speeding is bad. Piggybacking on that topic there, Chief, I had asked a few weeks ago about the, I guess we were calling pole cameras and getting some prices for those. I just, even myself, you know, when I'm driving and I see those, it does make you check your speed a little bit. I think it, you know, I think many times, and some of the complaints we give, you know, people are just a little heavy-headed, heavy-footed. You know, so I do think that does help us out in that area. Earlier in your presentation, you had said, you know, if we had ARP funds at that time, you probably wouldn't agree to the 12-year. Can you expand on that for a little bit? How would that would have helped us?
Well, if we knew that the revenue replacement funds were coming, we wouldn't have had to do a hiring freeze.
Right.
We wouldn't have hired that class.
Right.
And that class would have had 16 people hired last, would have started the academy in October, and they would be getting cut loose about now, to be honest with you. Probably would have been cut loose a month and a half, two months ago, and that would have helped our manpower.
I appreciate you. My last thing, I do want to compliment my NPO, Officer Blinkley. You know, I frequently, you know, we have frequent conversations about a location in our community. And, you know, I got a call back from a report on a frontman, and to my surprise, it wasn't, you know, we ran people off or did that. He actually was working on a multi-proach solution that involved going above and beyond his job and, you know, knocking on doors and really trying to get some community engagement. And he found that in a few individuals. So, you know, as I said, when I emailed back, that's a perfect example of community policing. And guys like that, I salute, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, Officer Blinkley is one of our beacons of light. He's a shining star. He's a great officer. And I agree 100% the plan that he's put together for that area is above and beyond, and hopefully, we can make it a reality.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
Alderwoman DeSanto?
Thank you. I also want to touch on the Neighborhood Police Officer Program, which I've talked about before. That BEAT 500 is just insanity. It is enormous. I think it covers at least three wards and maybe part of another one. And Officer Musson is doing an outstanding job. And I'm going to make my twice yearly push to, instead of eight BEATS, you have 10 wards. So, right now, I have three neighborhood, well, two neighborhood police officers, and one is vacant. So, you know, it gets a little confusing on who goes where with what. And I just think it would, you know, probably cut down on their workload a little bit if we ever get the extra officers to do that, because it is a great program. And the neighborhoods really appreciate it. The citizens appreciate it. They like to have someone they can call directly. And I just think it's such a positive program for the city, and I really commend all the officers.
Yeah. As far as making the BEATS align with the ward lines, it's difficult, because we try to break it down like workload. We try to look at the type of calls, not just the number of calls, but the type of calls. If I'm going to, if you look at the BEAT, maybe you'll see BEAT 300 is the smallest. But all those calls over there, a lot of them are two, three, four-person officers that are needed for that. Where maybe in 700 or 500, where it's a much larger, it's one-person calls, even though the call load's the same. So you got to look at all those factors that come in. So that makes it difficult. But we are planning on putting some new initiatives in front of you with the NPO program, and I would appreciate your support on those.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing those.
Any other?
NPO?
Any other questions, or just Alderwoman Conley?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I would love to have a replacement, a new NPO in my ward, in BEAT 700. Looking forward to that.
You will get the first NPO when we get our manpower back up, I promise.
Thank you very much.
Again, we're running short on, we've had to cannibalize every division. Every unit has been cannibalized and make sure that we're fulfilling our fundamental and giving the minimum that we can do on the streets and keeping an amount out there.
No, I understand. I just, our last NPO is very missed by a lot of people. They liked him a lot, so.
You know, we would do our best. And as far as for Alderman McMiniman, AC Scarlet brought up to me, last year, total traffic crashes were 4,282, and citations were 7,947.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Very good.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Chair, entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October 5th, 2021 minutes. City Council members, improve the minutes. The movement second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair, entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of the City Council meeting.
Second.
The movement second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair, entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of the City Council.
The move.
Second.
The movement second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair, entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final pass.
The move.
Second.
The movement second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda...
Sorry about that, I thought you...
...passes. Nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2021-239, 2021-336, 2021-337, 2021-365, 2021-370, 2021-371, and 2021-390 remain table during committee. Is there any motions on the, Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to withdraw 2021-239. I've had some meetings with our inspectors and some other impacted community members, and I think this might not be exactly the right approach that we need right now.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion to withdraw 2021-239. And second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is document number 2021-410, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $547,242 for payments to the Police and Fire Pension Funds for the Office of Budget and Management. Chair, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-410 on final pass.
The move.
Second.
The movement second. Chair, make a motion to amend the ordinance by adding an additional $500,000 payment.
Second motion, the move.
The movement second, any discussion?
Somebody...
I had to ask Director McCarty if he's here. I don't know if he's here, with regards to the state of the finances and our ability to do that.
Sure. I think the question was asked last week, what was our fund balance? We ended up last year about 27%, around $32 million. We have certainly the ability to do the additional payment effect. If you want to triple it, that'd be fine.
Not all the time.
The reality is that we have done this, this is, there's precedent for this several times in the last 10 years, at least since I've been here. We've done additional payments when our fund balances come in healthy, when we have the ability to do it. And the reality is, we're going to have to pay it sooner or later. The sooner we get more money in the pension fund, the more it earns in returns. So it's certainly a good use of additional funds when we have that ability. And, you know, as we go into the budget season, we may look at trying to do something more as we have those conversations. So I would say if you want to double it, that's fine. I don't have any objection.
Alderwoman DeSanto?
Is this ARPA money, or is this just regular fund balance?
No, this is just regular corporate. You can't use ARPA money for addition, for pension payments.
I didn't think so. Thank you.
No problem.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you. What's projected fund balance usage to balance next year's budget? What percent? We've been averaging about 5% a year.
I don't anticipate using any fund balance for next year's budget, but we're early in the process. I can tell you that, yeah, I can tell you that I don't anticipate that right now, of course. That depends on how much everybody puts in the budget, of course. But certainly, we do know that we have a couple of major cost centers that will see increases. We've got pensions going up a million dollars or so next year. And as you'll, I think, might be on first reading tonight, our healthcare has gone up quite a bit, and will be going up quite a bit. I think the city share, it's not all corporate, it's just citywide all funds, but I think it's going up over $2 million next year, the city's portion of healthcare. And the majority of that's corporate, but not all of it.
Well, I'm, look, I'm all in favor of putting money towards the pension. And we still have the marijuana money, the cannabis money, then, you know, some other things that we've ticked off to go to pensions. And I don't know what that number is. That would be something interesting to get from you, you know, a projection of what those numbers are, you know, in addition. But what concerns me is, okay, we asked, we were going to use ARPA money to replace the Scott Dolls budget. And why are we not using fund balance then, instead of the ARPA money? You know, we've used ARPA money to replace the firefighters' budget. Why didn't we use fund balance money? I, you know, I mean, I, again, I don't have a problem with this. I think it would be better served to wait until budget season and put this in toward the end, because my concern is, we're going to get to budget season. And last year, you said, if we continue in the route we're going, we're going to, we're going to be in critical mass within four years, I think it was, wasn't it?
Right.
And now, we're fine. I mean, this is a Christmas miracle, Bill.
No, I didn't say that. I didn't say that. If you will recall, yes, we would, I would wish for a Christmas miracle, but if you recall the presentation, if you'll recall the presentation that I did in, what, June, the wrap-up, what did I say? We can go back and get the tape. I said, right now, things look really good. And they are, if I'm looking at a one, maybe two-year window. But if I'm looking at a 10-year window, things look poor. And they are. Why is that? Primarily, it's because of pensions. What I'm asked for today is my opinion on putting more money into pensions. I don't have an issue with that. Now, if you ask me my opinion on starting new programs, or hiring a bunch of people, or doing things, I would tell you, I don't know that that's a great idea. But if you're asking me today if it's a good idea to put more money in pensions, sure, put it in now, because we're going to put it in anyway. And if you put it in now, you're going to see return on that investment. You're going to get 7, 10%, whatever the market generates, especially if the consolidation goes through. So you're better off putting it in now, rather than putting it in, say, three years from now, or five years from now, because you're going to, you're going to churn investment. And that's going to help in the long run. So, as I said back in June, things are good now. They are. They look good. But you have to understand, where we're going over the next five to 10 years, things aren't good. At least, not on paper. Now, a lot could change. And again, we're coming out of a pandemic. We stopped spending last year. Our expenses were extremely low last year because we didn't hire, because we stopped spending. And because of that, our fund balance went up precipitously, because what did we get? We got almost $5 million from the federal government that we didn't expect at the time, certainly not when we were budgeting. So that was an additional bonus. So the combination of drastically reduced spending and additional $5 million put us in a pretty good position from a fund balance standpoint. And that's why we ended with 27%. Now, we were already on track to increase our fund balance prior to that, because of all the actions we've taken, especially since 2018, when we were at a low point, if you remember that, those of you that were here, had to unfortunately increase a few taxes and do some things to stabilize operations, something that hadn't been done since, I think, 2005, if I'm not mistaken. But it had to be done. So as long as you continue to be responsible with the dollars and think ahead, and not just in the moment, we'll be fine. Right now, pension funds seem like a good option for additional funds. I wouldn't recommend it for other things, as I said, but pensions, yeah, we've got to pay for it. So if we've got some additional money, and you want to put it somewhere, that'd be one of the places that I would be near the top of my list, in terms of putting additional funds somewhere.
Alderman Donlon?
Thank you, Mayor. Director, I'm trying my darndest to think ahead here.
You're usually pretty good at that, Alderman.
So I'm in favor of the amendment. I think it makes sense for the reasons that you stated. But I just want to make sure I'm clear. I heard you say that the budget that you anticipate presenting, and we all know that that's the role of the executive branch, will be presented not utilizing $1 from fund balance.
That's my hope.
Well, you guys, you control that.
But I also said it's, I also said it's early in the process.
Yeah.
Well, I have a boss to answer to, and he likes to work with me. And sometimes, there's some things that he wants to put in there. That's his job as the elected official.
My point is, that would be a welcome change.
Right.
And I look forward to that. So, thank you.
We will try that. But, yes, we have some, some good debates, don't we, Mayor?
Sure.
But ultimately, this man's elected to do some things, and he's got some ideas, and there may be some things he wants in the budget that he wants to try to sell to the City Council. So ultimately, it may have some fund balance in it, because we do have some extra fund balance. But it may not. It's just very, I'm, could I introduce a budget that doesn't have any fund balance? I bet I could. But that would be my budget, and you know how I am. I don't like, I like to say no to everything.
That's how you are.
My job is to say no to everything. So, but yeah, if we were just to keep what I call a maintenance or keep the lights on budget, I could do that without fund balance.
So, Mayor, for clarification, the amendment that's being proposed is for additional $500,000 in addition to the amount that was in the original proposed ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that correct, Alderman McMiniman?
That's what you, a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Director McCarty, first of all, I don't know that I ever want to see your zero-line budget, because people do like our services.
Well, I wouldn't cut any services. I didn't say that. I just wouldn't add a bunch of stuff.
Well, but that said, so we just had a presentation from the Chief of Police. We know that staffing is a concern at the police and at the fire department, and we're seeing overtime costs. So making this additional $500,000 payment, are we going to have any issues with overtime costs?
No, you will be getting, and you've gotten reports, we will be bringing forth a supplemental at some time, because overtime is...
Continues.
Substantially over what was budgeted.
Right.
And expected to be substantially more than double what was budgeted in the fire department. So at some point, you will see that supplemental, and that will be something that will need to come from fund balance as well, depending on how spending ends up for the year. I mean, we may budget it, or have a supplemental out of fund balance, but if we continue to control spending, especially with, you know, you just heard from the chief about how they're down in personnel, we may not end up dipping into fund balance, but certainly, that'll be the ordinance that comes forward. So there are some issues, but no, there won't be anything that would, I think, inhibit us hiring police officers, if that's what you're asking.
Police and fire.
Yeah. I mean, I would expect the staffing levels to, you know, be proposed at that level. But again, it's very early in the process.
Yeah, with regards to the police chief, he manages overtime, or has the ability to manage overtime differently. Because if they get to the point where they're running up against the overtime, the individuals, he doesn't odd them off. You know, they have to trade with someone so it doesn't incur overtime, like the, unless, like the fire department, where that's a different situation.
Right.
Because of the contract, and if you want to explain that.
Sure.
Process, that'd be helpful.
Sure. And I think it's demonstrated, if you look at what the chief talked about tonight, or I think, I think you asked the question about the 12-hour shifts. It's one of the ways that they were able to use flexibility to change how they operate and change their shifts. That flexibility doesn't really exist in the fire department because of the contract and the constraints that are part of that contract. So certainly, don't want to get into the weeds with the fire department. The mayor and Corporation Council are certainly in negotiations with them on that. But, yeah, ultimately, that's, that is the one department where we will, for the time being at least, unless something's worked out, continue to struggle with overtime, even, even with hiring.
Right. And I guess, I do understand that. But thank you for going over it again.
Sure.
My concern is, again, we're talking about a police department where they're talking, it's long hours, difficult work. If people aren't allowed to take time off, I'm not sure, because we're trying to control overtime costs, now we're talking about, again, there's trade-offs in there. People take time off for reasons. And you should have, use your sick time when you're not feeling well. They shouldn't be coming, you know, I mean, I just think we need to make sure. I have concerns about the overtime that we're incurring, largely driven by the understaffing. And I want to, I'm all in favor of adding more money into this pension. I agree with you. You put a dollar into the savings account now, it's going to pay off more later. And I think this is, you know, considerably more than $1. I appreciate that. But I do think we need to make sure that we're also not nickel-and-diming our frontline men and women who need to be able to, if, you know, take their time off, even if that means budgets look like they're getting a little more overtime accruing. In the end, it's, the city needs to be hiring. And we know the difficulties associated with that. But I don't want to see that people, especially, especially in the police department, are encouraged to not take time off when they need it. So, that's it. But I, thank you for bringing this in. I'm, I'm in favor of this, and I appreciate you having that long-term perspective when you bring us amendments. Thank you. Thank you.
Certainly.
Yeah, just to clarify, they can take sick time, things of that nature. But if they want to take a special day off because of, you know, I want to go to the baseball game, the chief says, no, they have flexibility within the contract. But that's, that's a difficult subject that we're trying to broach, and one that's going to hit the wall one of these days if it's not correct, and that's what we're trying to look at. I challenge all departments to look into the future post-pandemic. And I'll say it again, the fire structure of the 1970s is not going to work post-pandemic, just like the police, just like Public Works. Everybody's looking that way, so that's the direction we need to get to. And hopefully, everybody understands that and supports the men and women in blue, the fire department, Public Works, and all of that. But we all have to work together. One department cannot be at the detriment of others. And that's what we're trying to correct, is to make sure we're all moving in the same direction to protect the public as best as possible and provide the services as best as possible.
Alderman Gregory.
I just had a quick comment. You know, this, this, I, I'm in agreement with this. I actually second it. But my concern is, as you said, for the future and stuff, and, and have we, and I dread to say this, but have we done any studies, or do we anticipate studying this, this pension thing and how we can combat it? And if you have studied it, can I see it? Because it's going to take me a while to read over another thing.
Yeah. We get actual reports every year, and every couple of years, we ask for long-term outlooks on what the expectations are. That is part of the presentation, I think, I did in June, which has the, and I can send it to you again, but if you'll remember the slide that had the red
Yes.
and had the $830 million that we are going to have to pay between now and 2040 under the current structure
Right.
and restrictions that we have, yes, we get those numbers annually.
Okay. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. Couple, what's the projected over, overtime that we budgeted for the fire department? I, I know we just got a report a while back, and I, I just can't remember what the chief mentioned.
We budget about $1 million, and of that holiday pay, that's the one thing that we, you know, you expect to have. You're, you're going to have that. And the holiday pay, I think, is just shy of half a million, maybe 483. So, you know, call it 500 and something thousand for other things. So $1 million budget. We're looking at, I think the latest projection was 2.4 million. So 1.4 million over.
So wait a minute, we're going to be over 2.4 million, over what we budgeted?
Over 1.4, 1.4 over what we budgeted. We budgeted a million. Right now, the trend is 2.4.
There's a percentage that's gone, right? Where that's, kiss that goodbye. So it's 26, we're 25. Okay? What, how much fund balance have we spent, unappropriated fund balances have we spent since budget time? Or since we found out that it's 2 point, or it's 26% or whatever? Because we've bought things that were unappro, you know, I want to know where we are right now on the percentage of our fund balance. Are we at 26% now? I don't think we are. I think that we, we're not keeping track of what we're, what we have spent. And, you know, like I said, I, I think it's great if we can do this, but I got some serious concerns that all of a sudden, we're going to get to budget season, and instead of 26%, we're going to be at, even at 20. And all of a sudden, we're going to see 4%, 5% more of the budget because we're going to have to raise the fire department's overtime budget. If they're going $2.5 million, you know, and we're only giving them 1.5, we're going to have to, we're going to have to raise it. It's, it's, they, they haven't managed it, you know?
If nothing changes, yes.
So there's another percent that we're taking, and, and, you know, I guarantee you, you can't say that we're going to be a zero fund balance when we got, we're over 1% over what we usually do on, on their overtime. So, I mean, look, I think we all think this is a great deal, but, and it, and it is, but I'm just telling you, especially the new, the newer Alderman, when it comes to, when it comes to budgeting, it's, all of a sudden, things change. It, it's, it's amazing to me, you know, so.
No, I agree. I mean, obviously, one of the things that concerns us is coming out of the pandemic, a lot of uncertainty. We're trying to look back to, at lessons that we learned coming out of the recession and to, to utilize that going forward. No, I can, I can sit here and tell you that I'm fairly certain that we could do, introduce a budget that doesn't utilize any fund balance. But again, it depends on what's in it and how much ends up in it. It's very early in the process. We're still compiling things. We're not even out of October yet. We really don't get going until November. So it's really early to say definitively, but a lot of discussions have to happen between us and the departments and the mayor. And we'll just, you know, certainly introduce the, the best budget that we can, as balanced as we possibly can, using as little fund balance as we possibly can, hopefully none. But we have to go through the process. So I really don't want to sit here and, and try to predict what we're looking at when you get the books, say, two months from now, give or take. But I certainly understand your concern. It's concern that I've shared, as you've heard me many, many times, that we need to be cognizant of not just now, but the future. And as of right now, I feel fairly confident where we are and that, that there are some things we can do, like make an additional pension payment. But I continue to be concerned about the future. That has not changed, and that will not change until there's some type of success with the state legislature and the pension restrictions that we are currently obligated to follow.
Call the question on the amendment.
Thank you.
All in favor of the amendment? Again, it's to add an additional $500,000 to the police and power pension. Say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay.
No.
Motion carries. Is there a motion on the movement on the ordinance as amended?
So moved.
The movement second, any discussion? All in favor, oh, sorry, Treasure Busher.
Sorry, Mary Langfield. Thank you, Alderwoman Purchase. Can I just ask, is the 500,000 split evenly between police and fire, or how is it breaking, being broke out?
It'd be broken out equally.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes as amended, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-414. I'll ask that this be withdrawn because the individual had found other, or has other obligations.
So moved.
Second.
The movement second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2021-415, an ordinance authorizing Thomas Osborne to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission. Cheryl, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-415 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
The movement second, any discussion? He is here, if you'd like to come forward. And I did ask him, as he moves forward, school district 186 does have a residency requirement. He's the chief financial officer, and will be moving in, as he said, because he's just taken on the position as the finance officer for school district 186.
That's correct.
Any questions or? Very good. And he did attend today's meeting, so we appreciate you taking that time.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2021-419. She's asked that this be withdrawn for personal reasons and family obligations.
I think we want to, don't we want to take it back to committee, Mayor, and just we'll resubmit a new name? Or do you want to?
No, she's, yeah, they wanted it withdrawn, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Second.
The movement second, all in favor, or is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2021-420, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Springfield and GR Consulting LLC for professional lobbying in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the office of mayor. Cheryl, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-420 on final passage.
So moved.
Thank you.
The movement second, any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMinimum.
I know this has a lot of support on the council, and it's going to receive a strong yes vote. I've got just a philosophical objection to spending money for lobbying for just a general purpose. I think we should target the lobbying for a specific purpose. I've talked with Mr. Lester, and I think he's going to try to get us some grant money. So if he's successful at that, I think that can be a real positive. And if he's successful, then I'll be a yes vote a year from now if we renew the contract. I think we do get outstanding service from Illinois Municipal League, which represents over 1,000 municipalities, especially on the pension issue. They're the ones that most recently was able to really work hard with the support of over 1,000 municipal members to get the aggregated, police and fire pension funds aggregated to a common fund to reduce costs and to get better returns. So that's the kind of leverage that IML has. The, the president of IML is a former mayor, two-time mayor, elected mayor of Carbondale. He knows the municipal issues. And I just want to mention that we get that service for $7,000 a year. $7,000 a year is what we pay for our membership in IML. I hope this lobbying contract produces some good. I think, and to be honest, I think very rarely do we have a standalone issue where the city of Springfield has a situation separate and apart from all the other municipalities. Maybe an exception with City War Light and Power. And some, some, I heard some comments that maybe Doug Brown shouldn't have been over there so often at the state house. We should have had a lobbyist. No, no, no. We want the guy with the most facts, the most expertise, the most knowledge over there, explaining our situation to the, the general assembly. So, but I, I, I hope that this lobbying does some good, and I just wanted to express some of the opposition to it that I'm hearing out there in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. We do plan on providing direction to the consultant on specific items. You know, of course, first and foremost, Enos Park TIF, right?
That's correct.
Alderwoman Purchase. But again, I take, you know, what you said's correct. Doug Brown was the right one over there. And, you know, my own personal opinion, but even with, no offense to GR Consulting or any consultant, that would help on the lobbying effort. Kathleen Alcorn helped with that initiative over at the state house with the energy bill as well as others. So I think we're probably in as good a position that we could have been in with that legislation because they were going to come to a conclusion. And so I think to have it out 2045, when you count 31, 32, and 33's emissions towards that 45%, you know, that's a lot of individuals doing good work, as well as Senator Turner. She really carried that banter for us as well. So I think, I think we probably ended up in probably as best a position we could have expected. But there are initiatives that we will be forthcoming, especially in the spring session, to provide specific direction on some of the initiatives for us.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, real quick, I do think that one of the top, top issues has got to be our pensions. I mean, we've all been talked, we just talked a lot about it. They're, they're eating us alive. The ramp, I talked to people that were in the Edgar administration, it actually put the ramp together, and they laughed because they said it wasn't meant to be set in stone. It could be adjusted or whatever, but for some reason, they don't want to do it. So I, I think that, you know, Larry, that's something I'd love to see us really tackle. And I know there's other municipalities or, you know, it's the snowball going down the hill. And so that's something I would like to see us get involved in with, with other municipalities.
Yeah, that's definitely one of the items.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMinimum.
I meant to mention also this. I saw in the request for proposal that any political contributions, lobbying funds given to our elected representatives have to be approved by the mayor and our Corporation Council. I saw that in the write-up to the request for proposal. I personally think it's a mistake to give any political contributions to any of the general assembly members. I think it's going to get us into trouble if we do that. So my great recommendation would be that we avoid that type of activity. I think it's rare for municipalities to give campaign contributions. That's what I understand from talking to some people. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but that's what I understand, that private interests give a lot of campaign contributions, but municipalities in Illinois typically do not, so.
He has other clients. We're not his only client.
Yeah, as far as our money, that's not going to go towards that.
No, we don't.
I'm just saying what was in the, in the request for proposal.
As an entity, GR Consulting can give money to whoever they want.
There was language that said that there could be, there's a discussion in the request for proposal. I'll read it to you if you want me to, but it says that
We'll put it in the agreement.
It suggests that, so I'm just making a recommendation is what I'm doing.
That will make sure it's in the agreement.
I think to stay out of that, it's a bad idea.
And we'll put that in the agreement, right, Counselor? That it restricts that part.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, I just want to look forward, and I look forward to working, I know the city looks forward to working with your firm. I think we need boots on the ground. Alderman, Alderwoman DeSenzio, I appreciate you bringing this forward. It's something that needs to be done. Sure, you know, things, whether things worked out or could have been better or should have been better back in those last few sessions, that's in the past. We got to look forward, and the more the mayor that we have working for us directly is good. The Municipal League, Alderman McMinimum, you're right, has done a phenomenal job. Good people, good organization, but this is only going to help Springfield. So thank you. I intend on voting aye.
Alderwoman Conley.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess you did already, you were the first one. And, and I just, I, I can understand, you know, the Municipal League is, as, as a voice for municipalities as, as a, you know, a whole group and a class of, of organizations. But like, we had a conversation tonight about the state routes that run through Springfield and the high accidents that surround that. So it'd be nice if we could get some, you know, we have a lobbyist who speaks for us to say, hey, I dot, city of Springfield needs some more money for speed control measures at these dangerous intersections that connect with state routes. I mean, there are a lot of big and small ways that having our own lobbyists that speaks very specifically to our interests and our needs and the needs of our constituents is going to be a huge addition for us, and very much looking forward to this. And that's, not saying anything at all about the efforts of your existing staff and, and their work at the state house. I, I will say, I'd like to make sure that, that your professional staff is busy doing what they need to be doing in, in our municipal buildings too, because I think Doug Brown and Kathleen Alcorn probably have about two and a half jobs on a normal day anyway. So I'm pleased to see that we'll have our own lobbyist, and I'm looking forward to seeing some great results from this.
And we did send out a, I think it, Tim Griffin, that we distributed to everybody that gives that short list of potential initiatives that we want them to lobby for us on. So you can provide your feedback on that. Any other discussion?
Actually, Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Conley.
When would you like feedback from us on that?
Tonight.
I know, I know.
How about within a week?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if we could get it before Monday, it'd be good. By the end of this week, be good.
Okay, thank you.
Because the veto session started, actually. But there's not going to be a lot, but there will be TIF discussion, I do believe, by But there's not going to be a lot, but there will be TIF discussion, I do believe, by the IML. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
I think it's voted.
And it passes eight voting yes, one voting no. Is there any unfinished business come before, just, wait a second, one more. Carol entertained a motion to suspend the rules and place, and rules and add place on first reading, agenda number 2021-436, ordinance approving tentative five-year agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 31, Local 373D8, clerical, technical, from August 1, 2020 through July 31, 2025.
It's on the move.
Second.
The move and seconding and discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business? Come before the council. Alderman McMinimum, then Alderman Gregory, then Alderwoman Conley.
Speaking of the veto session, are we making progress with the letter we need from Capital Township to extend the life of, to extend the life of Enos Park Tax Increment Financing District? We really need to make progress. And, you know, I'm so disappointed in Capital Township on this and in Joe Aleo, I'm not going to name names, Joe Aleo, and Brad Carlson, who's run for Alderman Ward VII. If they can't understand that the extension of Enos Park TIF is important to that neighborhood and to our city, then I think we ought to, you know, we haven't ever done a resolution of admonition, but we ought to think about that. Where our residents in Springfield are so harming our city that we can't even get a letter of approval from Capital Township to extend the life of Enos Park TIF, I think it deserves special attention, and we ought to call them out on it. Mayor, you've done everything you can to try to move the ball in a, kind of a civic and non-adversarial manner, but aren't they being adversarial with us by not getting the letter out? I mean, Alderwoman Purchase can speak to this, I think, very well. So I'll deal to Madam Purchase.
Thank you. I would say that there is no support, and there is no support moving forward. Joe Aleo.
From Capital Township.
From Capital Township, as I was the sitting Capital Township trustee, I couldn't get a second for almost six months to get a support letter. It was the only entity that was left that needed the support letter to move this forward. He wanted to basically relinquish our powers and add people to a board to dictate how we spend our money here at the city. And I'm pretty sure the mayor definitely was not in favor of that, so we never moved forward.
Well, that's actually borders on legalities, and I don't know if corporate council, if you want to weigh in on all of that, and then while you're at it, you can just explain the difference. I mean, we're talking $40,000 worth, I think it's $40,000 was projected for Capital Township, jeopardizing millions of dollars for Enos Park and Medical District, and it impacts downtown and the city, and the list goes on and on.
Yeah, just briefly, you may recall that there was a discussion at the council some months ago with the response from Capital Township where they had proposed to create a board to supervise the TIF expenditures. And it proposed to have appointed members from each of the taxing bodies that would then overview any TIF expenditures in the city, not only of the Enos Park, but all of the various TIF districts. And any agreement that the council approved would then have to be approved by that board. And we did explain to the various county and township representatives that that actually violated the tax increment finance law, the mechanism that was set up that actually places responsibility with the elected officials of the city in managing the tax increment funds. So the proposal that did come back, there was never a response, that I'm aware of, to those concerns about what was being outlined. The Capital Township's annual portion of the Enos Park TIF area is approximately $5,000 a year. So over the period of the 12-year extension, it would be approximately $60,000. The mayor has, at different times, both in writing and otherwise, pledged the $5,000 back to the township as indicator that that way that protects them if their concern is that they believe that they should retain their tax dollars instead of putting it into the TIF fund. Now, most recently, the mayor has sent a letter to them with basically a certificate of nonparticipation indicating that we would include in the ordinance, you know, if the legislature does extend it, we have to, the city council has to adopt an ordinance. And you may recall when we did the downtown TIF and others, we put into the ordinance certain payments or specifications, for example, to some taxing bodies. So the mayor has indicated to them that the city would agree to insert into the ordinance that refund of 100% of their money. Therefore, really, the request for their letter really should not be relevant, simply because they're going to be made whole and they will not participate. So that's been the latest activity, but there's been a whole list of both meetings and requests and different proposals to try to address whatever the specific concerns from Capital Township. Interestingly, there was a recent change in the legislature that addressed, in the TIF law, that addressed requirements for annual reporting, job creation, and other different items that actually directly address what some of the concerns, at least that the township had raised. So the state law's actually been changed to require more reports and so on to the taxing bodies. So at the current stage, right now, the request has been made, but there has not been a response from the township, so far as I know at least.
Right. This request started in May of 2020, and, you know, during that spring session. And when I brought it up, you know, Capital Township, I mean, the first words out of Joe Aleo's mouth was that he didn't want me talking ill about Capital Township or about consolidation. So that's a driving factor. So all this other stuff is ancillary, diversionary tactics, and it was clear that he didn't understand what's in place already, because you have a joint review board that all the taxing bodies participate in. And so when the extension comes forward, they all attend. But he did attend one, the last one we just had, with regards to the SHA TIF that will be forthcoming. But the other thing we put in place in 2015, when I came into office, was the Economic Community Development Commission. That's, everybody supported it. That has the school district on that. And then you had, well, at that time, it was, Capital Township was represented by Alderwoman Purchase, and then you had other professionals on there that would vet the TIF projects, and CDBG for that matter, and bring them to the council. And so it went through that whole process of public forum. And then, you know, the reports are out there, you know, as far as transparency, people throw that around loosely. It's all on our webpage. So it was pretty clear that the objections were a diversionary tactic for what's at the heart of it. But the bottom line is, it should be extended. It's been supported by both hospitals. It's been supported by the SSGA, the Springfield-Sangamon Growth Alliance, the taxing bodies. And so we're moving forward because the letter, you know, the policy of the letter, the importance of it for state legislators, is that the taxing bodies are protected from their taxes. And so that's the importance of saying, okay, if you don't give a letter by this Friday, then we'll, you've elected not to participate, and then we'll include in the ordinance that we would rebate back promptly the amount of the revenue with regards to Capital Township and that TIF extension. But that's what it essentially says as we move forward. But hopefully, we do have success in this veto session. Hopefully, they do, you know, hopefully, they come to their census and provide the letter of support, because you're right, Alderman McMinimum, they're using our own taxpayers against us. Capital Township is could terminate us with the city of Springfield. So how many of you are taxpayers in the city of Springfield?
I'm raising four.
Very good. How many would you like to see Enos Park TIF extended?
Both.
And then the reason for that, that is the best way to give money back to the residents, the property taxpayers in that area, get their money back to do development. And so he's using our own taxpayers against us. So Alderman McMinimum, one of the things you were asking that would be specific to the city of Springfield, and I've talked about this to legislators, and I will have the individuals lobby, not necessarily for Capital Township, but for the township parcels within the corporate limits of the city of Springfield should be dissolved. And if you, if you understand this, I'll give you one example. All the properties around the lake, when we annexed them in, they should all went to Capital Township. Instead, Woodside Township, by a loophole, had a referendum to retain them in their township. So even though they don't provide any services to the citizens around the lake, Springfield does. We provide the police, we provide the fire, we provide the public works, all of it. They get a portion of our residents' taxes. It's absurd. So that's one of the initiatives that we would push towards is those pockets or parcels that we've annexed in and now are no longer in Capital Township. We'd ask for the dissolution of those township parcels, and then that way get some relief to our taxpayers.
Mayor, may I add one other?
Yes.
If I could, please, just to put in perspective slightly, the projection on the Enos Park TIF was approximately, over the 12 years, approximately $6 million, round numbers. And again, this has been talked about, you know, at the council different times. Approximately one, between one and one and a half million was to go towards the Y project. If the, if the Enos Park TIF is not extended, that means that burden then falls on the downtown TIF, which then takes money from downtown, which otherwise would have been paid through the Enos Park, which had been agreed to because of the location of Enos Park. So in a way, it has a double negative impact, because not only in Enos Park, but it then actually diverts money from the downtown TIF to complete the payments for the Y development.
Very good. Alderman Gregory?
I just, I agree with Alderman McMinimum. I've had some great conversations with Alderwoman Purchase about this, and, you know, and I know the subject is Enos Park, but it, you know, we had a great meeting with our SHA residents, and, you know, I get a sense that they're really, really looking forward to a TIF extension there. So I would hope that these same games and these tactics are not played for the SHA TIF. But however, I do agree that we need to, you know, do all we can to really try to dissolve this, since this game is here. It's important for our constituents in this city to know that this does hamper our ability in many ways to really provide some redevelopment tools for them. I find it odd, yes, I'm sure, you know, in the past, that we have not done everything, you know, right? That's some of the thing about policymaking. However, I, you know, they have those same things there. We get complaints from citizens all the time in our wards about not getting their needs met, having extra money left over. There was a guy on the radio the other day, really speaking on the large surplus that they have. There's a community in need that needs that money. So, you know, to play these games, it really sets me back, especially now that we're at this point. You know, I've always supported the Enos Park extension, because I do know what ramifications it does have on our corporate fund. So I would be in full support of anything we can do to really, really, you know, take it to them. I, you know, I was thinking a diplomatic way and, you know, things like, but it definitely sounds like we have, we have really tried that, and now we got to really, I hate to say it, but get to fighting and go after it. Thank you.
Anything else for unfinished business? As we mentioned, there was a public forum for the SHA TIF extension, and that will go from Madison Park Place. The intent is to expand the boundaries, to go around Pillsbury, that whole area, and help with development in that area. We had about 50 people. And there is a second public forum related to that, which will be Monday at 5 o'clock, and that will be at the library in the Carnegie Room. Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I want to do this under unfinished business, because I have brought it up a couple of times at this council meetings. So I've checked around. We have a date set for us to have a special meeting of this council so that we can discuss priorities and spending plans for the American Recovery Plan Funds. I'd like to propose that for Monday, November 1st, at 5:30 PM.
I thought we were waiting on this plan.
Sorry?
I thought we were waiting on the mayor's plan.
Nope. This is for the council to come in and bring this, what we've heard from our constituents, what we're hearing. I know, Mayor, you've mentioned the ward meetings, and I appreciate those, but I know at my ward meeting, we didn't even have time to touch on, on what people would like to see really for those funds. So this would be an opportunity for council members to bring our ideas, for us to do a little bit of focused outreach to our constituents and bring those ideas. And then, Mayor, we can have a really meaningful conversation about how we're going to plan and spend this unexpected windfall of funds for us.
Yeah, we'll have that planned at the same time, so that'll work out.
Wonderful, thank you.
And as Director McCarthy said, it's right in time for the budget.
And we'll be right, right before, right before those budget books start getting put together. So, so again, that would be Monday, November 1st, at 5:30.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
Yes.
Alderman Williams, and then Alderman Hannah?
Yeah, this is a good segue into my new business, dealing with Sangamon County. So, you know, most of you know that at the federal level and the state level, they have been doing redistricting maps, talking about the new maps and conforming them to the latest census that has taken place. So I don't know if you, Mayor, or corporate council can answer this, but I'm interested in our timeline for our map as well as our process. What is the process? Because I've been doing a lot of reading, and I see where I think there is something that says, as long as we're 90 days before the first day of filing of the, you know, the next election, we're on time and we're fine. My concern is, what we've been discussing tonight, I need to know what the process is, because, you know, I really want to be involved, and I'm hearing that, well, the county doesn't. And I'm like, you mean the same people that won't put us on the help board, won't sign off on township, the dog pound issue? I'm very uncomfortable.
Wouldn't like to misquote us in press releases, those people?
Yes, those people. I'm just uncomfortable. So maybe I just need to get it straight from corporate council. The timeline of when we do the redistricting for our wards, as well as how I can get involved in this, and what is the process? Do we do our own map at the end, or at the beginning, or in the middle, or what?
Yeah, I'll answer, then corporate council, but from experience, previously, I believe the council had done the redistricting based on the census, of course. I think at times, there's been a chair or co-chairs of that particular group. But Counselor, I don't know if you want to talk about the process.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, because I was on the council, the only one here on the council when we did this the last time.
Okay.
The way it was done last time was, we contracted with the Regional Planning Commission to put together an initial offer of plan. And then their proposed map came over to us, and we looked at it thoroughly, as Alderman, that the council had final approval. And there was some tweaking. The Regional Planning Commission wanted to make sure that the consent decree with the federal government was, with the federal courts was honored appropriately. And last time, as I recall, we had the proposed map about six months prior to any filing period. So I think that's a good benchmark. I think the filing would begin next summer. So I think we need to get, I agree with Alderman Williams, we need to get going on this and reach an agreement. If we're going to use the Regional Planning Commission again, we need to tax them with the work that needs to be done.
Yeah, I think it has to be done by March then.
I thought we've already voted on that. I thought we voted on that to, for somewhat the Regional Planning and Zoning Commission.
I think it was the ongoing.
Not the red map.
No.
Corporate posts, Alderwoman DeSenzio, then corporate council will weigh in.
But wasn't that voted on in 2014? And isn't this, aren't our maps redrawn every 10 years?
Well, as soon after the census as we can do it.
But there wasn't a census in 2014?
Well, because we didn't have an election during that, between the, when that census took place and 2014, and 2015.
Corporate council?
So we had more time last time to do it.
I was just going to say what Alderman McMinimum outlined is, I mean, going all the way back, Alderman Redpath isn't here, but that's the process that the original council followed with the, getting the, if you will, a preliminary map from regional planning. However, the final decision maker is the city council. The law provides that you may take input from the, you know, who you believe is appropriate, but ultimately, there will be an ordinance adopting a map defining each ward area. So it would be very appropriate to have the Planning Commission do a preliminary plan, and we certainly can find out kind of what the cost might be in the timeframe, but a preliminary plan in light of the census, that would be presented to the council, be thoroughly vetted, discussed, debated, and then ultimately adopted by an ordinance, if that's of some help, anyway.
Okay, so where I'm getting at is, so in this process, first of all, it's not a requirement to contract with them, but we're allowed to. Am I correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Historically, that's been kind of what's been.
So the, and the mayor used the term chair or co-chair. That's us. That's, that's some people on the council, one's the co-chair, and the other one's the chair. And when we get control of that preliminary, this is when we do our process, where in the end, we do our map and approve our own map, and that's why you say ultimately it's the council.
Yeah, it goes through us and ordinance, just like everything else.
Okay, yeah. This is, this is much helpful. I appreciate it. I'm interested in trying to be at least the co-chair or chair in this, and I'm interested in portioning the issue forward to get started. Thank you.
What I would, maybe I could help here with this also. You know, it's totally appropriate for the council to meet as committee of the whole, a special committee.
Yes, yeah.
To review it, so it's not just simply part of the normal process, if you would like. And there'll be a breakdown of the analysis that the Planning Commission would do, the basis for a recommendation. Typically, what happens is, it has to be done by precinct. In other words, you don't divide precincts and so on.
Sure.
They try to keep them reasonably.
Really? I have three half precincts.
That's supposed to be. Anyway, it's supposed to be, you know, reasonably compact, and yes, we have to follow the requirements or the directions of the original consent decree.
Okay.
If that's of some help.
Well, that was helpful. I guess, I just don't want the ball to drop. I, you know, some people may view this as, well, we got time, but I don't, and I definitely do not want another body, you know, drawing a map. I'm okay with the preliminary thing. Maybe they can give us what they're thinking and pass it to us, but that's when I think maybe the committee of the whole ideal would work, or a special committee, kind of like what we're doing with the funds. what we're doing with the funds, Aaron, kind of one of those concepts to where we have control and we're discussing with each other and, because we know the precincts. We know where they're split, where they're not split. We know all that. So, I definitely want it to be us doing it. Thank you very much.
Hey, Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman.
On that subject, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Mr. Griffin, he's dealt with it. Didn't they meet with Alderman? And I thought that the regional planning, don't they call you in and kind of show you what it is and then they?
I think they just presented like a approach, a proxy plan or some kind of plan and then Alderman then contacted them or talked to each other about making some changes.
Amendments to the ordinance.
I think, I'm just going from memory. Again, Alderman McMinnum might be able to weigh in, but I think the last one, I think there was objection how they drew it up.
There was some tweaking in certain other wards and it was dealt with amendments to the plan. And we debated the amendments and voted on the amendments and some amendments got through and some did not.
Just like the ordinance process.
Just like an ordinance process.
So, I don't know if you want a small committee to work on it or not, but that'd be three individuals. Alderman Conley.
Mayor, I appreciate, Alderman Williams, I appreciate you asking the question because it has been a topic of conversation amongst a lot of us the last few months and it needed to get put out there publicly. And there is a, it sounds to me like there is an open process. We're going to rely on the technical expertise of our planners that deal with the census numbers, precinct numbers and all of that, but ultimately, it becomes our decision or is our decision as a council. And we will have ample opportunity to discuss, look at, and ultimately vote publicly on those issues. So, but thanks for bringing it up because it needs to be put out there for sure.
Yeah, but one more thing. So, again, they can do that. I mean, I'm fine with all that, but timeline, are they doing it now or are they working on it right now?
I think we learned tonight because of your question that no, they're not doing it now and it needs to be started. So, I appreciate bringing it up.
Well, and that's why I'm asking because I see the other levels of government doing that and you answer me that way, I leave here thinking, oh, well, one day they're going to decide to do it. So, I want some movement.
Absolutely.
So that it can get started, please.
Yeah, I guess, well, I don't know how the council feels. I'd feel better as you have a working group that kind of works towards that. So, I don't know if Alderman Williams wants to do it or Corporate Council, Sir Mon and two other Aldermen or what have you, but I think that way we're assured that's the city's perspective, you know? I think that's what we need to make sure. The last time it was brought out to the council, I'm going from memory, we'd have to look at the, you know, the news recount of that, but I think it was pretty contentious at times. I believe, you know, it's with regards to minority participation awards, things of that nature. So, we don't want to be arguing about it here. We need to get it settled on the forefront and kind of get a consensus moving forward as opposed to, you know, you know, we bring in two people at a time and said, here's what we're looking and then you're trying to, you know, create the model. I think it might be better to have a working group and then bring it back or something and give a presentation throughout or something.
Mayor, I don't really have a preference on if we do it one way or the other, but I do want to be involved. I think it's important for the future of our citizens and the proper representation, going back to the consent decree as well as what's best for the city as a whole and our wards. And so, whatever method, it's not like we have to reinvent the wheel because it's been done many times before and it's worked and not saying we can't do it a little different. But anyway, Alderman Williams, I appreciate you bringing it up because it is something that needs to be absolutely on our radar screen. Thank you.
If you would like, what I could do tomorrow is I can talk to the Planning Commission, get a copy of their procedures and just circulate it to everybody so you can see what they've done in the past.
That'd be great.
That would be very helpful.
Yes. Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd just like to suggest if there are more than three council members who'd like to participate in this, the only thing that triggers is it's been an open meeting and I don't think there should be any concerns about that. It just is posted because there, I mean, there may, I just heard three or four people say they'd be interested in being part of this process. So, I just ask that we not limit it to three.
Alderman DeSento, then Alderman Hannah.
I've got another topic, Mayor.
Okay. Alderman DeSento.
I'll be very brief. Why don't we just give it to the Regional Planning Committee and let them take a look at it and present us with the map and then we can make our tweaks.
Sub groups then, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
That's been the process.
That's the proper way to do it.
That's right.
Very good. Any other discussion on that? Alderman Hannah.
Yeah, Mayor, I want to be, just real quick, I want to congratulate Ken Leonard. Coach Leonard, as everyone knows, he's the coach of S H E's football program. He's been there for a long time, over 35 years, I think. He just set a record of 400 wins. I was fortunate to be on the sideline with him for about 300 or 275 of those. He's a good friend, a great coach, and he's been a great mentor to a lot of people. And I hope he has about six more wins this year and about 14 wins next year and 14 wins a year after that. So, congratulations to Coach Leonard and he's a special person.
Congratulations.
Quite milestone.
Let's get him a, Alderman Hannah, will you request a?
Proclamation.
Proclamation?
Already been done.
Outstanding.
The mayor actually beat me to it, so he, give the mayor credit for that.
It's in my ward, but I knew you'd want to speak, Ralph.
Actually, the. Alderman Purchase and then Alderman Gregory.
This is a friendly reminder from the Springfield and Central Illinois African American History Museum. The traveling exhibit Negro League Baseball is being displayed and is going through October 30th, Tuesday through Saturday, noon to 4:00. And I would like to strongly encourage my colleagues and the public to go and see it. It's an awesome layout and we're coming up to the end of the exhibit.
Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory and then Alderman DeSento.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. I did receive just a little communication and I think this is, it's final, we really can't do much about it, but from some of our employees that had just some small concerns and misunderstandings on health premiums. So, I promised the young lady that I would speak on that and encourage our departments to sort of put out some education on it, maybe, and if I'm, you know, so I think that's important. There are some concerns about that. Secondly, and my last point is tomorrow, we did receive a generous gift for a million dollars of the partners received a generous gift for a million dollars for some developments, for various developments in Cox Park. They are having a public meeting tomorrow, 5:00 at the Salvation Army. So, I encourage any staff, any of my colleagues to really go over there and give some suggestions as well as the public, of course, as we really want to put out a good product for the citizens of that area. So, I appreciate you.
Alderman Hannah or, sorry, Alderman DeSento.
Director Bottom, you do not have to come up here, but major kudos for Walnut Street. It is now the showpiece of Springfield. It is, you don't, okay, you can come up and get your.
Yeah. I just wanted to mention too, though, thank you very much, but I wanted to mention that we do want to get feedback on that. So, if you can type in MacArthur Lane Reduction and send an email to feedback@springfield-il.us, would appreciate it. We've choked it down from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction to evaluate and see if a median will work at the intersection there at Williams Boulevard.
But I was talking about Walnut.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Sometimes you gotta smell the roses, Nate.
Sorry, yeah, yeah. So, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
But thank you for MacArthur also.
Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Purchase.
Wild, Director Bottom was just up here. I did want to personally thank you, Director Bottom and Director Harris for attending my Ward Five First Town Hall meeting and the Downtown Business Town Hall meeting. It was very effective and there was a lot of knowledge that was transferred through those two town halls. So, thank you so much for coming out and helping to educate the public and teach them about the process.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that was well attended, very beneficial. Any other new business? We have a few people that signed up to speak. First is Jane McBride.
Good evening, Jane McBride at 3300 Forsyth's in Springfield. I'm here today speaking with regard to my position with Illinois Humane and it's in regard to the animal control situation. First, I just wanted to be here. I was the one that was in the press pieces and so I wanted to be available for any of the Aldermen's questions as to exactly what's going on with animal control and why we've taken the steps that we've had. And some of you are getting communications from me trying to explain a little bit more about the details about what the issues are with animal control. But I've been before this board a number of times, asking for additional attention on that service. And just for the new Aldermen, I just want to explain that I've been working in animal welfare in this community for over 20 years. I'm working animal law, was chairman of the American Bar Association Animal Law Committee, past chair, also heavily involved with the Illinois State Bar Association Animal Law Committee. I teach shelter law and I also ran the American Bar Association Shelter Law Conference for over five, six years. So, I do it nationally, regionally, statewide. And we have a local organization as well that has been a partner with animal control seeking, getting veterinary services. So, we rose, we brought the issue forward of the situation with the accumulation of cats and the resultant disease that has ended up there. And that is a classic example of what happens when you congregate cats at an open intake shelter. There is the potential for them to get stressed, the herpes virus kicks in and you start to get discharges and you get a lot of different, you get the upper respiratory infectious complex spread amongst the animals, but you also have the danger of distemper. And about halfway through this episode, the distemper started to show up in the various rescues test results. Distemper is highly contagious and very dangerous for that shelter. So, why we brought this up to the extent that we did is because for months, it might be half years, but for months, the county had been warned of the situation as dangerously understaffed and without the appropriate level of veterinary care. And as that cat population grew and seasonal influxes happen every year, there's a lot of theories out there as to why it happened this year, but we've seen heavy influxes in the past. So, there's greatly need for attention on the incorporation of the available science on this. The shelter medicine community has thrown themselves at cats and the phenomenon of shelter, cats in shelters the last five, seven years, lots of new information and science, not seeing it implemented at that shelter. So, some of the underlying, as I said, this is a symptom of a larger situation and this was our ultimate, once we started to see these diseased cats, we acted and we went to the press. I'd like to ask for additional time, just in case the Aldermen have questions, if I could get that. So, we brought this attention to the press. I was very impressed. The city stepped up right away, offered the county some assistance, and we were hoping for a urgent, serious response. The response has been lukewarm. I will have to say that might be what I call it. And we've been tracking, I mean, this has been one way to get this county to respond to the situation out there of the understaffing, serious understaffing and the lack of vet care. And I was on a path here about, this is a culmination, as I said, of staff, volunteers, the partnering group, everybody involved with that facility, going internally, trying to get attention on that place. And there was, we didn't feel there was an adequate response, there was any response. So, we ended up going to the press, which brought on a response. And so, it's been, it's been slow, but they went out there and they, we asked them to hire outside cleaners. They brought, they did their own cleaning. Dr. Luthen has been out there a lot more to help work with the cats. They shut it down for two days, it was like the end of Friday and Saturday. And I'm not sure if it was open Monday or not, but they did that. And, but as far as, you know, we were trying to get, to try to get some kind of response out of them. And you all saw the press release last week where they were called for an investigation by the Illinois State Police and by Department of Ag or, you know, invited a surprise inspection from the Department of Ag. So, after these measures were taken, the cleaning and some of the shifting around, there indeed was the surprise inspection from the Department of Ag. And they issued a news release today that they came through that with flying colors. What those inspections are, are a single site visit and a discussion with the management. What needs to be done is for the, for everyone involved to be able to speak what they've experienced out there, just so, you know, to continue to document what's happened. But that's, I will say in all my, and that was why I was trying to give you my bona fides at the beginning here, I'm not impressed. I'm not, I'm not, what the Department of Ag and what's happened there after some of these measures were taking place does nothing for me. I do not feel the situation is, has been responded to whatsoever. I also had the experience today that I was called, as we have all been, the organizations, we are now over 30 cats dead. By the way, it's not 17, it's over 30 cats between everybody taking cats and trying to bring these animals through. They're in pretty serious condition by the time we get them. We also have the distemper issue. And I've shared some of those test results with all of you. So, you can see where we hit the distemper and just how serious the one cat was with the upper respiratory associated infections. But when I went out there today, I went out there in a response to a call amongst the rescues that's usually started from the staff itself, internal staff, and I was denied the cat I was coming out for.
Just point of order, I mean, you asked for additional time for questions, but, you know, you yourself are taking over, you've got to summarize it and get to the point, I think, Ms. McBride.
Well, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to, I'm trying to report right now that they have denied us cats, all right, to help and save. That's the point I'm making and I want the city to understand that. So, when the rescues come and get the cats, they provide the testing, they provide the vet care. We were going to isolate that cat and take care of it. Dr. Luthen indicated that she wanted to, she felt she could provide that care and she would be coming out more frequently and the like. So, we do have a continuing, a great continuing concern for that facility and definitely want continuing attention on this situation. I have one more point, Alderman. The veterinarian looked at me and said, well, then you get more vet care out here and you do something about the staff. So, they did hire somebody not too long ago, actually had a pension for cats. And that individual, his last straw was when he was scheduled for three straight weeks with no time off because they're understaffed. And he couldn't do it. He had a young family and so that was it. And so, now they're down again and they are table. So, it's an overall management problem. It's brought, been brought to the county's attention repeatedly and I, you know, this slow walk forward is not addressing the urgency out there.
Any questions? Yeah. Alderman Gregory.
Was that you? But I will, I will say this, overall, Ms. McBride, what would you recommend for us to do with this situation as far as in the future and care?
Sure. So, what's been discussed is a couple of different approaches by the, you know, by the city, because you've got your contract with them. I would, what I really want, I would like, you know, frank discussion with the county to, which is problematic in itself as you've already identified here, but I would like to see a frank discussion with the county to see exactly what can be done about the management issues as well as if they claim they don't have the funding, then let's get the numbers out, okay? And let's get the numbers out. And then, since we, but we have a management issue out there, okay? Because we can't retain, we can't seem to retain staff and we can't seem to implement industry standard practices. And you've got all the help in the world from the nonprofits. We're all here at the table spending a lot of money on the vet expenses. So, you know, ideally, there would be some way forward with the county because you've already got that facility out there. Okay? If that's, and the other thing that has been discussed is a. If that's, and the other thing that, that has been discussed is a, working towards a feasibility study of potentially the city taking over animal control. Okay? Now, when this reference is taking animal control back, I want to remind those of you who were not here way back when, that what the city had was a holding facility, okay? The city did not have its own shelter. And they had one animal control officer, and then they had, the person in charge of it was, would change with every administration, let's put it that way, all right? So, I mean, that's why we went with the county, because they promised a much more professional setup, that they were going to build this new facility, they were always, they were going to have a vet on board, a vet, a vet used to head that, that facility up, okay? And it's, it didn't follow through. And they also sold it to the city at a very low rate, right? So now they're the sole source, right? And so now we're in trouble. So when, part of this exercise, and, and I know you're getting these emails, and it's a little much, all right? But part of this exercise is to show you what it takes to run these shelters, all right? And, and so you understand going forward that we have to have certain, they have to be staffed up, and they have to have good management, they have to be, have professional management. And there is professional management. There's the National Association of Animal Control, there's the Illinois Animal Welfare Federation that has true professionals who, who understand. That whole Prairie States Conference, the whole operations track was on cat management, cat facilities. So that's, that's your, your options. But in the meantime, so, so, and then there's the other option that's come up, that to issue a request for proposals, for somebody else to run it. And I, at this stage in the game, in my judgment, we don't have anybody locally who is prepared to take that on, because we don't have another shelter, all right, to go to. We've, we've got that one. So this is the dilemma, all right? But the urgency is there, all right? The urgency is there. So I don't know if there's a way to get this done, if there can be mediation or what we need to do, but those animals are not doing well out there, the dogs don't do well because they're not, they're not handled properly. I will tell you, they finally invited APL in today, APL's new shelter vet went in there and toured the place. They considered maybe two or three proposals regarding the cats and the dogs, to bring in dog trainers.
Ms. McBride.
Right.
We definitely have had a lot of conversations, and we, we know this is an important issue to you. I, I would just encourage you to have these conversations more in depth with corporation councils, so, so we can see if we can facilitate some type of meeting with the county. As you heard, it's always a wrestle with, with many things, you know, and for, for me, and, and I know, you know, I don't speak for the council, but we, we really want to try to remedy this issue quickly, but we have limited power on this, other than the 280 that we, that we contribute to this. And, you know, I, I know it's been discussed to, to try to put it out for RFP, we don't like that. And, and for us to force the county to manage it anyway than, than what they have, and, you know, there's some other powers more powerful than us that have looked at it, we're sort of at a standstill, it's a sad situation, but I assure you that every last one of us are gonna, gonna do all we can to try to remedy this situation, because it's, it's a big deal. We get a lot of emails, we get a lot of calls about it too, so we, we understand.
Alderman DeSantis.
I'm just going to reiterate what I started with last week, and that is to call your county board members, because the people around this horseshoe are powerless to effect any change. So I know there are a handful of county board members that are interested in this and are interested in working on it. So I really think you need to, you know, get with that group and connect with them, because as we sit up here, we have no representation at animal control, we have no power, we are simply a piggy bank. And that's the fact of the matter. There, there doesn't seem to be an appetite for another shelter. I know the urgency, I'm the one who brought this up last week, you know, but there doesn't seem to be an appetite for another shelter. As you pointed out, there isn't any other option. So I think you need to, I think every animal advocate group needs to put the pressure where it belongs, and that's on the county, their county board members, because they're the ones that can do something about this. We can't.
Well, that's not going to be a happy message to your constituencies, and, and I understand what you're saying, but people, and it's not just me, Alderman Gregory, there are a lot of people very concerned about this. I'm here speaking. If you want them all here, they'll come.
We would, actually, I would like them all here.
So, so that's just.
Well, we will, I've had initial conversations with Brian McFadden of the county, see what steps they've taken with regards to that. I know they have a group coming in, used to be Maximus, I'm not sure what they are now, looking at the feasibility. But we offered this last time with regards to the 24/7 care, you know, because what's the differential, you know, we'll take care of it. And I think that's the struggle is, you know, we'll, we'll look at, we've already reached out to another city of comparable that looked into a shelter concept, but I think our best option is maximizing our resources here and moving in that direction. But we'll see, but we do, we'll have those conversations with the county and try to move the ball forward as much as possible with regards to that. I think they understand the situation, I think they're looking at a vet, you know, full-time vet possibly, but that's going to take money instead of having the part-timers volunteer their time essentially coming in, which hasn't worked, because the whole veterinary service has kind of changed, where they're, you know, you used to have a lot of local ones, and as they sell to the larger conglomerates, for lack of a better term, then they get no compete clauses, things of that nature, so it kind of hinders their ability to volunteer at the shelter. But I know, you brought it up, it's been played in the media as well, and the county's mentioned it with, with regards to the staffing level over there. I don't know if, if there's a way to help, I guess, try to find individuals to work there and train them exponentially. Juan Wart will be happy to help with that, he's had job fairs, but I don't know if they even participate in any of that. So anymore with job training or getting jobs filled, sometimes you're going to have to go out and get people and identify who they are. Chief's been doing it, police, Chief Winslow's been doing it all the time. Thankfully, he's been doing it pre-pandemic, but he can tell you how, how much of an effort that is, and it seems like they're in a similar realm, because that's not an easy job. I mean, when you're talking about euthanizing animals and anything of that nature and taking care of, you know, sick animals, it's not a fun job, because, you know, you get a lot of complaints, not a lot of thanks, and, you know, but we need to move that ball forward in a positive manner with regards to that. So we will continue efforts with the county, try to push them as much as possible, but, you know, move that direction.
We do appreciate all your effort, everyone does, for sure. It's just been very hard dealing with these very sick animals and knowing that it didn't have to be, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping a focus on this.
Next is Chad Gallo. I hope I said that right.
My name's Chad Gallo, I live in Springfield, Illinois, born and raised. I worked at the Dahman Power Plant for 23 years. I'm the unit steward for the operating engineers, local 399. I represent 14 people that got letters for layoffs due to closing 33. The first page of the handout, IMRF webpage, at the asterix.
If you don't mind, can you lower your mask so we can?
At the asterix, you will see how much percent the city contributed in 2020, 2019, 2018. It's an average of 10 and 1/4 percent. That's going to be a significant number. I know that the city don't think that they did very good at the last two early outs, but this one's going to be different. Due to rollbacks, wage resetters, wage freezes, that was done six years ago. In the State Journal Register, Doug Brown said that there is going to be 30 employees affected to this close down, eight to 10 without opportunities available for, for employment. I know Human Resources is trying to attempt to fill them, but this will do an immediate. Four out of the 14 people that I represent would probably benefit from the ERI that you will not have to find new positions for. I'm going to refer to before the wage resetter and after the wage resetter. Before the wage resetter is the people that's going to benefit from the early out, and after is the people that is going to fill in for the positions after the people do the early out. On page two is the electrical and water department agreement for wages. It's kind of little and confusing. So on page three, I made a spreadsheet, the electric department in 2015 and 2016, their wages. And the, that's the before the wage resetter. And then on the yellow would be the after the wage resetters, and you can see a significant deduction of $4 to $6 an hour per person. Page, page four is the water department, same thing. It's 2015 and 2016, so there's five more raises on top of this. The wage resetters are frozen at this, for the last six years, and you will see a difference between $6 to $14 an hour that the city could save by doing an early out. Page five is it just another with the city. The circled ones are the rollbacks, and the not circled ones are, are the before the wage resetters, the people that's going to be leaving on the early out. On page six, there's an example of how much the city will, it will save the city as an early out. $50,000 salary times the 10 and 1/4 percent for the contributions that I said that was a significant number, which is $5,125, times five years is $25,625 per employee contributed that the city will do, and for five years. An average of a rollback of $5, $5 an hour, which is very low. 2,080 hours work per year is a total of $10,400 savings per year, per employee, times five years is $52,000. You will recoup your money in two and a half years or less.
Mr. Mayor.
With all the new hires, I have.
Are we at the five minutes already?
Is it five minutes?
So, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, wrap it up, please.
And with the new hirees, you will have more people in the city paying with the residency and paying for Springfield taxes. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
And the second, the second pamphlet is 11 other contracts with the rollbacks that are circled, and the, the before wages too, that you guys couldn't see.
Mr. Gallo, don't be offended, but I don't know, I have seen nothing about this to this, until this point. I think you're arguing for a, a buyout instead of a, a.
Early retirement.
Early, early retirement instead of a, the possibility of a hire back? Is that what you're arguing for? I don't know what you're arguing for, I don't know.
I'm arguing for an early out, so these people will not be laid off, that, from the Dahman 33 power plant that you guys shut down.
Okay. Maybe not tonight, but Doug, Mr. Doug Brown can kind of explain what's going on here and give us the options and the cost and benefit ratios.
Well, I mean, it's just not Dahman, it's the whole city can save money through an early out with all these wage freezes. Do you understand what wage freezes are? What, 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 that all the contracts in the city has been?
In concept, but I don't know what we're dealing with here, to be honest.
You guys could save a ton of money. You could save millions.
I like the idea, that's a good idea.
For early out.
Yeah, we'll have Director McCarthy and Doug Brown take a look at the numbers along with HR and run the calculation.
And I'll stay here, and if you want my phone number, I'll give it to you, and.
Sure.
We could talk. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Matt Lotterbach.
[inaudible].
Oh, is, yep, that'd be next.
Mayor and council, thanks for letting me talk here. I've got a couple of questions for you. First is, there was discussion that somebody was working with the employees that have been affected, the 18 others that have been affected that I represent, I'm the chief steward, we have not been contacted at all by anybody. We have no contact, we have received a letter, we received, we knew nothing. We had WTX in the morning, at 3:50 PM, W, or the newspaper had it on their website, at 5:15, we got our email discussing it. Later that week, we get a, mine was Saturday, no, Monday, that I got my letter at my house. So we have not received any contact from the city itself for any help to do or what we should be doing. Secondly, the thing I'd like to discuss is, when Doug Brown and John Davis were up here to discuss closing down these generators, they stood here and told you that the rates were going to stay low. Price, the price to purchase on the market is going to stay low. It hasn't. It's over triple what it was when they convinced you to shut these units down. Had this, had this unit been repaired in a timely manner, you would have recovered your money by now. The $3 million could have been recovered by now if this thing would have been repaired by now. And that would have, in the long run, would have given you two and a half years versus five months to deal with the employees that you got, that are going to be laid off, lose their jobs if, if they're, if they're going to be replaced somewhere else. That's my discussion.
Mr. Mayor, on that point, I think we passed by emergency passage an immediate effort to open up the unit by General Electric to determine what the repair cost might be. So I think this council and the mayor acted immediately once we became aware of what our options were for that unit. So I don't, I don't want to get into a debate with you, I'm just.
Then it may not have gotten to you as quick as it should have, because we knew way before you guys had made a decision to shut it down. At the plant, there was multiple.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things.
The repair?
Yes.
Yeah, the repair.
We, there was multiples, it, that was already gone around the plant of what the costs were way before you guys made the decision to shut it down, or way before we were notified that you were shutting it down.
No, the repair, there's been two different repair issues on the same unit, that's what we're talking about.
From the, from the last shutdown right now, from the storm damage?
No, the, no, the, the one after that.
That's put it down right now?
Yes.
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
We were not told it was storm damage. We were told we didn't, they didn't know what shut it down.
Well, they, it's been reported that it was storm, that a storm took it out of what the newspaper placed out there. But there's vibration issues that we knew of, so.
We didn't make the decision to shut it down.
No.
Well, it was shut, we were sent from the city that you were shutting it down, so.
Yeah, Alderman Conley, then Alderman Dowler.
Thank you. And I, I just want to say, I, I'm sorry that you found out about this through the media. I have actually gone through a layoff process myself. It's, it's very destabilizing. It really is. It's, it's, it's very stressful, and, and I'm sorry that that's how, you know, that this came out in the media first. that this came out in the media first. So please, please understand, I don't think that was really the plan for, for notification. The only information that, what the information that the council got is, and that we know of, is, you know, that unit was no longer able to be insured because of its age, that it's, it wasn't, it was going to be expensive to a point where we couldn't, we couldn't even get a guarantee that the repairs, that the repairs would work. So yes, having this, this timeframe shortened from when, from, from the, you know, the February 23, when you guys knew, I mean, that was, that was very original. Having that timeframe shortened, I completely understand.
Right. Well, there's a lot of people that, well, it was fiscal year 23.
Right.
Which, there's a lot of people that would have, would have been able to retire at that point.
And I, and I appreciate, you know, that we've, we've heard tonight already about, you know, encouragement to look into this as an option. And I, I trust that, you know, our, you know, the mayor's, the mayor's office, Doug Brown, they will look into this and, and give us some options on this. I just, I mostly just want to tell you, again, I understand how, having that, even when you know that rug is coming, and it's gonna, it's gonna knock you over, when it actually happens, it's, it's very upsetting, and it's, it's, it's very difficult.
When two years get pulled out, pulled out of a.
Right. Well, you've, and we do have some time.
By the media.
Right. And, and yes, and, and I agree. And I, I just, I mostly just want to say I'm sorry that you heard about it that way. And I, I hope that you know that we'll be looking, you know, and, and the mayor has made it clear, as, as many positions as can be made available at the city level, we're heading into the budget season. I know Public Works could probably use a few more people, you know. So, so hopefully, we can find places for people who want to stay working for the city, so that they can continue to have, you know, be a part of, of, of providing the services to our community.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lotterback, I just want to thank you for your, the wherewithal to come forward tonight and express your concerns. The way that you found out is, is not appropriate, and it shouldn't have happened that way. And if, we'll just leave it at that. Thank you for coming in.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Then next is Michelle Robinson. Chairman, do you else wish to address the council?
Mr. Chair.
Two, I have two announcements real quick. This Friday is the Follow-up COVID-19 Vaccination Clinic at the YMCA on Carpenter Street. This is in partnership with the city, and it will be from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Booster shots will also be available in addition to the first and second doses of the vaccine. And then the second, this, I believe it's this Saturday, the Household Hazardous Waste Drop-Off Event, and that will be at the Fairgrounds. You can get your voucher going on the city's website at springfield-il.us backslash HHW by noon Friday. It's open to all Illinois residents because of our partnership with the Illinois EPA. And I think that's it. So is there a motion for adjournment?
Come on.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay, or adjourn. Thank you.
I was going to tell you is, we can have you do a letter to the commission tomorrow just saying, please initiate the process. And then just copy, everybody. We can just copy.
I'm with the.